I ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us come as with glowing hearts. We see thee right to north, strong and free from far and wide. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the audio and our singing of today's national anthem. Just moving along here, going to get onto the right agenda, my apologies. I wanted to move to our land acknowledgement before we move to the adoption of the previous minutes. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree Dene and Métis people as the original care gait takers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on treaty eight territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on to item number four on our agenda today, the adoption of the previous council minutes, recognize councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held June 12th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 4.2, the special city council meeting held June 15th. If I could get someone to make an emotion to adopt that councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the special city council meeting held June 13th, 2023 as presented.
If I could just have a friendly amendment to be June 15th.
Yep, sorry, I late got in the way there.
Not a problem. Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's meeting, I'll look to councillor Bressi.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue with additions or omissions, I'll call the question, please vote. And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegations portion of our meeting, for those of you who might be watching online, delegations are encouraged, an opportunity to come speak to council. You can come at 3:00 PM session, or you can come to the 6:00 PM session, assuming we are having one. Today, we actually aren't. But one organization let us know ahead of time that they wanted to come speak to council. So I'll ask the representatives from Rising Above to come on forward. I'll give you a couple of minutes to get set up. Turn your mics already on. So once you're set up, I take five minutes to address council. Council may have some questions for you. Following that, council deals with delegation business at the end of our meeting where they may have questions for administration. So for now, welcome. Nice to see you both. But if you could introduce yourselves for those who might be watching at home and then take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My name is Mel Sigalco. I am the director of Rising Above Ministry here in Grand Prairie.
And I am Dan Rickler. I am the vice chair of Rising Above as well.
Right, welcome.
And we also have two other board members who were just seated behind us, Brendan Balzovich and David Nesbit. And David, if you don't mind passing out that summary sheet. You should have each of you received digitally a copy of this over the last... Sorry, I took them back from you.
No worries.
And so what is being passed around is just a one-page summary of the material that we sent out to you before. The reason we are here, council and mayor, is to ask for an extension on our current lease arrangement with the building that used to be known as the Young Offender Centre that is now known as Rising Above Park Campus. And then permission to build a three-story, 3,200 square foot building on the northeast corner of that property. Our current lease on that building, it was a 15-year lease which began March 1st of 2016, and it is set to expire on February 28th of 2031. Now, in order for us to get the financing and stuff to proceed, we need a much longer lease arrangement guaranteeing that we could have access to that facility for an extended period of time. So our ask before council would be for a 40-year lease starting from now on that. We have had some conversations with city administration and there were no questions regarding the planning and development and zoning and those issues. We've also had conversations with the school board as our property now borders with the composite high school, and they have no concerns with our plans to proceed as well. But let me just give you a very quick overview. For those that may not be familiar with Rising Above, we are a faith-based addiction treatment facility here in Grand Prairie. We've been operating for 16 years, so we began in 2007. We are licensed as an addiction treatment facility in the province of Alberta, and we, as of 2021, became accredited with the Canadian Accreditation Council. Our history with the city goes back to our start in 2007, when we were fully funded with dollars provided through the city of Grand Prairie. It was provincial dollars that were administered locally here through what was called back then the Housing and Employment Initiative. And with that, we began the program. And then that funding model kind of at the provincial level changed from housing and employment to what was called back then housing first. And the city administration at that point said that we were like this square peg trying to fit into this round hole, and eventually they had to cut the funding. And so our first five years of operation were fully funded. And then from 2012 to 2016, we had to go from community support base, and that built up. And in 2016, we began the new partnership with the city of Grand Prairie with our current facility at Park Campus, where we applied with an RFP for the use of that facility, and we were granted that with a 15-year lease. And we spent $300,000 of renovations and bringing it up to code as it was an institution, a jail, and we needed to do a lot of work to get it set. And so currently, the city is leasing that property to us for a dollar a year, plus the city has been giving us a $50,000 a year operating grant to help us operate that facility. And the rationale for the new building, I think, is there in front of you. Dan, did you want to make a quick comment about that?
Yes. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay. So in the city, we've all been seeing homelessness increasing. So there's been approximately a 40%, 44% increase in that overall, which is adding to the demand of what we have. So Rising Above in last year had 417 people apply to be in the program, and we could only admit 102. So that means we had to basically turn away over 300 people. And with that said, we continue to see more and more people coming. You know, there's no end to this in sight, and that really does cause a lot of pain for us. So having that long waitlist that we have is definitely not a good place to be. With the increase of, I guess, what we're looking at doing with this new campus is to add 30% to our capacity. Now, 30% might not sound like a lot in terms of what the city's being faced with or the province with the climate that we're in, but it is a fairly large stretch for us as well. So when you look at, you know, 2007 to where we are today, we've grown significantly, and this would allow us to go from 102 admitted to approximately 133. And when you think about that, that's an extra 20-some people per year. That's 20-plus lives impacted every year. Addition to that, then also see our graduate school from approximately 32 to 44. So an extra 11 people, 12 people graduating per year. It's kind of what we're targeting for that. So fairly significant in terms of each life is an impact, and that can actually impact generations as we go. So, so yeah.
There's a lot more we could say, but I think our...
Oh, I appreciate your timely presentation and being respectful of time. I do see a couple of members of council in the queue with questions. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, gentlemen, for everything that you do in the community. It is much needed, and so personal thank you. The only concern that I really have with this is I see you guys are in a growth phase, and you're asking for a 40-year lease. What my hopes are is that you outgrow this current footprint in this building, but with the money you're investing, do you expect the current building that you're in will last 40 years?
Yes, I believe the current building that we're in will have a lifespan of at least that. It was built by the provincial government as an institution, and it's a pretty very solid structure. So I don't think we have any concerns about the building structurally. I think your point about would we outgrow that at some point in time? This idea of addictions is not going away anytime soon, so yeah, that could be a valid concern, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks councillor Berg. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for the work you do, such an important part of Spectrum of Care in our community. So really appreciate your organization. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the timeline on this right. So we've got a little chart on the summary. So you're hoping that there'll be a, kind of just meet your deadlines, you need a decision by October 1st, if I'm understanding this correctly? When do you need council to, if council's going to do this one? When do you need us to tell you?
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, this would be the next step for us before we start going quote "public" with our fundraising campaigns and getting the equity up. And so I guess this is the, this puts us in a wait mode, so the sooner the better for us to get into the next phase. Ideally, we would love to have our fundraising campaign hit this summer fall, begin to break ground next spring.
Go ahead councillor Bressi.
Something I'm just curious about is why the ask for a 40-year lease instead of just an ask for the land, instead of just getting ownership of it?
That would be a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you for coming. Just a note of congratulations to your previous fundraising attempts and your sponsorships, that you've done a great job of looking out for the people that you serve. So this is just an off question, but you tweaked something. You said your, the graduate success rate, what is that? And do you have a certain percentage coming back in regards to return of the clients that you serve?
Yes, we have a, I would say what would be a fairly high percentage, they'll come through the program, whether they complete it or they exit on their own or we evict them, that they will reapply to come back because of a relapse. And so we often have people that have been in the program before. The question regarding success rate is a very, very difficult question to answer.
What, graduation rate? And so...
So the graduation rate would be about a third of our intakes will actually stay with it long enough to graduate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it comes down to pretty much a third, yeah.
Councillor Blackmore.
This wasn't actually my question, but in the follow-up to councillor Bosch's question, how many number, how many people does that equate to that graduate? You said a third, so...
Over the course of a year, is it in that sheet, Dan? It would be a...
So 32 in 2022 graduated?
I was going to say just over 30, but...
And that was out of 102.
Okay, thank you. What my question actually was, is there's going to be quite a bit of development, potential development in that little corner of Avondale, and parking is, and traffic are always an issue. When I drive by there now, I see that your parking lot, although not large, is generally close to empty. There's not often a lot of vehicles parked there. So generally, how much parking is used by your clientele?
By the clientele, not a lot. By our staff and people that come in, like if you drove, drive by in the daytime, you'll see our parking lot actually looks fairly full. If you drive by in the evening when it's just the clientele, you're right, there may be one or two or three at the most vehicles there. And so our proposal and working with Barrister on this is to put the building in the northeast corner of our property, whereas in the southeast corner of the property, there was a large skating rink which is paved, and their suggestion and their diagrams for us is that would be converted into parking space, and there's a back alley access there that would give us lots of parking expansion.
I'm sure you've seen significant traffic increase with the high school being moved closer to you.
Yes.
Anyway, I know you'll handle it.
As councillor Blackmore, I just had a question in regards to your existing facilities. You have some single-family dwelling-style homes that use, and I understand those residents will be moving into this expansion facility. What is your intent with those assets that you currently have?
Yeah, that's, thanks for bringing that up, because that's one of the reasons why we want this new facility is to bring our houses that we have in the Avondale and Royal Oaks areas are for our women, and this would bring our women under the same campus, our ladies' housing would all be together then, which is one of the reasons we want to push this. And so we own, we own two of them. One is in the process of actually being gifted to us, so we would, by the time this goes through, we'd have, we'd have ownership of all three, and those would be liquidated, and the assets go against the property here. So those, those houses would be sold and returned, and I guess one of the bonuses for the city is right now we do not pay property tax on those facilities, and they will become property tax receivable again.
Thanks for that. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you. Just one more quick question. In regards to things like a commercial kitchen and such, are you healthy enough as far as size and capacity if with this 30% increase, or could you even go higher?
We, at this point in time, we feel like that would be a good next step, a 30% increase as far as bed space, knowing that the province is also looking at, down the road here a little bit, of putting a 75-bed facility in the area. And so ours has a little bit of a niche market because we're faith-based as opposed to clinical-based. And so we're thinking that this 30% increase would be a good next step. Now, your question regarding commercial kitchen though...
Right, you have a commercial kitchen onsite, right?
We do have onsite, but it's not utilized as a commercial kitchen. In our present model, each of our participants do their own food management, preparing it, buying their groceries. It's part of them being ready to be on their own. And now in this new model, we are, the basement level will be, we won't have a commercial kitchen in there on day one, but it'll be plumbed and wired and gas fitted for a potential commercial kitchen if we decide to go the food services model.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I see no one else in the queue. I wanted to thank you for coming today and for your presentation. As mentioned, the delegation portion of our meeting gets, any business that may be arising from your presentation is handled at the end of our meeting. So you're more than welcome to stick around, watch the conversation, and if not, if you have other plans, administration will follow up with you following this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, council, for the time to listen to us.
Thanks for coming today. So there are no other delegations for today's meeting, so I'm moving on to item seven. Under reports, a street light illumination, item 7.1, and I am going to turn this over to Chief Glavin for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll give you a brief introduction here. So at the June 6th, operational services committee administration was directed to bring back a report regarding concerns with the number of streetlights going forward. Currently, the city utilizes the Transportation Association of Canada and the International Engineering Society for North America for the design of street lighting. One key concern that we did identify was with ATCO in that they will not assume any liabilities if lights aren't installed to standard or designed to standard. And with that, I will turn it over to Christine to fill in some of the gaps.
Welcome, Ms. Donnelly.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin stole some of my notes, so I'll have to kind of re-center it here. So as mentioned, we do follow TAC and the, which is the Transportation Association of Canada, as well as Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. And when we're applying these according to the standards in the design manual the city has, for new urban roadways, there are streetlights that are installed. Streetlights are not installed on any lanes or, and when it comes to rural road cross-sections, we look at it a case by case. So when, when there are the lights installed is when we turn over to those standards, which have been well researched and they reflect proven practices, and those documents are used by the city also align with what other municipalities in Alberta are using. So I just wanted to kind of comment that visibility at night is dependent on the quality and the quantity of light the eye receives. Factors influencing visual perception are very complex, and just touching on it because I've got some big manuals that help out on this. When someone's traveling down a road, the driver's eye, it has to adapt to all the different luminance levels it encounters, and therefore, uniformity of street lighting is really important to reduce how much the driver's eye must adapt to the different lighting. Streetlights counteract the effect of other bright sources that you encounter, so vehicles, opposing vehicles... So vehicles, opposing vehicles coming to boards you, by having streetlights, the impact of that is reduced. And that better allows the driver to identify contrasting objects that are on the road. So these are important considerations. Changes to the streetlights do necessitate expert study to ensure that both the recommended illumination levels are met, as well as other factors like uniformity and the specific site conditions that are experienced. So we currently do this when there is a full road rehabilitation program. And I guess it's, it is recommended the report be accepted for information.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple counselors in the queue. Counselor Blackmore.
Thanks, Ms. Donnelly, for coming in. One of my questions is, in some of the Canadian cities I visited, they turn off approximately half of their residential street lighting at the hours of, say, 2:00 AM to 4:30 or 5:00 AM. Is that something that we are able to do here, given the way the streetlights are connected to each other? Could we turn off every second one?
Ms., sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Donnelly. I was just thinking about something else. Go ahead.
No worries. So I wish Atco Electric was here to assist on that question. But the current technology we, we do have would, would not be able to do that. Now, my understanding is there's a proposal to change the heads from, to the LED. And I'm not aware of the incorporation of that, but I know the new heads.
I think Ms. Gardner has some information you may find helpful.
Yeah, I do believe the new heads would have the ability to incorporate the technology versus our old heads do not.
Ms. Gardner?
Correct. That's correct. If, if we were adding it, we haven't added all of that at this point. We're just adding LEDs. But it does make it more future-proofed. So we could add that if we chose to. But it's not something that we would be doing at this time.
Okay. And then my second question is, you'll have heard this from me before in years past. There are a number of crosswalks in residential neighborhoods that are not effectively lit by streetlights because of the pattern of putting streetlights in the street. And this is a concern to me when I'm driving to work at 7:00 in the morning and some child in a navy blue snowsuit's trying to cross the road in front of me, and it's really hard to see them. I think that because, as you've heard me say before, if we make any changes at all to the patterns of how we are lighting our streets, we, we need, in my opinion, to really pay attention to crosswalks to ensure that they are lit, particularly in residential neighborhoods where, where the child crossing the street is, it's really a random event, and it's not something drivers may be expecting. So I'm not going to ask you to respond to that, but as we move forward through this process, that's something that's pretty important to me.
All right. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious how, how we move forward. I guess when I look on this map, and I see the, usually red is a bad color for me, but on here, I'm actually liking the red, because it means we're underlit. When I see that green and yellow are probably 80% of our roads, if I'm reading this right, that says they're 100 to 150% or 150% greater than what we needed. So how did I, how did we get to that level? Like, how did we get to, or 150% higher than what's required?
Ms. Donnelly?
So that map is a tool that we use. It was produced by having, hiring a contractor to drive around on the roads and take the average measurement of illumination. It was back in 2014. And so what you have to keep in mind is that when driving around, they would have picked up third-party illumination, not just from the streetlights that the city installed, as well as it, it does, it says 80 to 100, like it, so it's talking about the level in a comparison to recommended. So you do see, when you look at it, you'll notice the ones that are in the really high ones tend to be on the local roads. So I believe what's happening there is, is you start moving away from, there's the illumination that we, that's the goal to, to provide. But there's also that need for uniformity. And when we get into our local roads, that's where we run into a lot of driveways, fire hydrants, accesses. There's a lot of things that force us to perhaps locate the poles, not necessarily in the ideal location. And, and also, the, some of those are perhaps older, and at a time when some different standards were, were being followed. But to actually, to actually, we'd have to actually go out and do a better study to confirm that information. It, it was an average of some, a vehicle driving around. So I do know that if there was a burnt-out light, it didn't pick that up. It still showed that, you know, the average. And so it, it is just a tool for when we're doing a road rehab or doing other work, for us to say, hey, we need to go and study this further. Or if we do get concerns with some saying there's not enough illumination in an area, we're able to use it as a tool to say, hey, there's, there's a fair bit in this area. But to take it beyond that, it, it doesn't provide the review of all the things that would be needed, like the site conditions, the uniformity, as well as the illumination. So it, it's maybe not good enough to, to take it further.
Okay. One other question.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And just, I've, I've always been curious of how we get to our standards. Like, when I drive down 92nd Street, very dark light road, no lighting on it, no curb and gutter. We've added a sidewalk on one side recently that I would, I would have thought would have triggered something, but yet it's a 60-kilometer road with absolutely no lights on it, and it seems fine. People drive up and down it all the time, yet 68th Ave is, like, it's every 100 yards, both sides of the street, there's a light on it. And so I'm just, is there no, when I read through design standards, I'm just, I thought there'd be something when there's curb and gutter, or when there's double lanes, when there's not even a chance to head on. And, and I can't see in there any changes of lighting requirements, which I think is kind of baffling, that when you're on a very designed, double-wide road, why you would need as much light. You're not, there's, there's almost zero chance for head-on on 68th Ave. So I'm just, again, I'm going to come back to these standards, as this, as I guess it's just on us to change the standards to moving forward, if we want to see less lighting? Or how do we go back and combat being overlit in the areas of town? To kind of, Counselor Blackmore, is there, if we can't turn lights off, how do we, how do we get rid of this overlighting? Because it's, it's an awful lot of tax money spent on lighting our community. It's not going to get cheaper to light our community moving forward, we all knew that. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can change some of the lighting standards and actually make a change to what's previously there as well. Maybe that's a bigger question than today, and I appreciate the report for now, but it's kind of tweaked me more of, we're even more overlit than I originally thought we were, which is what this report gave me. So I guess my question there is, how does a new road impact when, like 92nd Ave, why, why is it allowed to be just like it is, and yet other roads are overlit?
Ms. Donnelly?
So I guess, just trying to, to step back a bit, if it is a rural cross-section, so it has the ditches, and it's only two lanes, and then we have been just approaching it where we are lighting the intersections, or where there, the lanes, there's turnbays or driveways, that type of thing. So that's why you'll see 92nd Street is that, kind of on the south end there. It's only lit there. There is a ditch between that rural road cross-section and the pathway that we did put in subsequently. When, with some of the roads that you're listing that are arterials, we know that the construction's being staged. And so we're going to have to come back. And so to put in some street lighting in a rural cross-section, we, we tend to try and wait and avoid it until such time as, as there is curb and gutter, and that there is no ditch between the sidewalks. So that's how we've been trying to approach it, and that seems to be reasonable with the standards and guidelines that are, that are out there, is recognizing that staging of infrastructure.
It's not about, that's not necessarily about current safety today. It's about when development comes along, that's when we'll put the lighting in? Like on 92nd Street, I guess?
Yeah, as the, the volumes and the traffic increase, we should be looking to add in those streetlights. We did add on 92nd Street as example. We recently improved the intersections, and we did install lighting to improve that area.
Okay, no further ones for me.
Thanks. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much for this report. I found the Calgary study to be very informative, and the difference between illumination and illumination, I thought that was quite interesting, and the levels and the heights of all the poles. So I really think taking out lights is really not in our best interest, especially when we take into consideration pedestrian. If pedestrian traffic increases, and there's a standard in there that says when you need to increase it, I think it's important to follow that standard. If we just arbitrarily just pull lighting out, that doesn't meet the safety on the road, nor does it meet the safety for the community. So I commend your putting this report together. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Just a question, kind of on the tail of Counselor O'Connor, but is there standards for light pollution moving into the future? So what's grandfathered in now is what it is, but into the future, let's say when we go into LEDs, do, what are we looking at for standards for light pollution now, or moving forward?
Ms. Donnelly?
Actually, that's, that is a good question. I think the step forward to LED does help with that, because right now, the lights we have, there is, they do go up, it scatters. There is a lot of pollution, whereas LED is much more directed, so that definitely will, will help with that, that type of step. There isn't any new kind of TAC recommendations on that. There is talk about what's coming, and I think it's something we should keep an eye on. And I think having heads on our lights that can be adapted and changed is, is what we need to be doing. Thank you.
All right. I see no further questions in the queue. I'll open it up for the business that may be arising, or not. Counselor Resi, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just move that we accept for information. Really do appreciate the report. I did find it very interesting, like Counselor O'Connor. Think there might be some interesting conversations to have in the future about light levels, both to save money, but also I'm concerned about light pollution and our residents' ability to see those beautiful northern lights in the winter. But I think for now, I've got what I need out of this. And so those are future conversations in my mind, not today conversations.
Thanks for your motion. That is in order. I'll call a question.
Resi in favor?
O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies. Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business, on the same bright conversation. We are talking 8.1 about Atco's street light proposal. And I will refer to Chief Glavine again.
If I may, Mayor Clayton, I'll take that one.
Our CFO. Go ahead, Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you. So respectfully, I'll assume you've all reviewed the report. I'll just hit a few points on it. There's two recommendations today. First, that counsel accept the Atco street light conversion proposal. This would use 95,468 of the funds from Atco to convert 23 private lights. Sorry. 23 private lights, 152 400-watt lights, and four 1,000-watt lights to LED, and would be 522,000 to catch up backlog of street light repairs. So this is step one, option A, B, and C, and step two, option A, B, and C in your agenda package in the attachment. Second recommendation to counsel is that the remaining funds received from the proposal be allocated to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. So just to speak a little bit to this, the city of Grand Prairie does have a franchise agreement with Atco, and this does establish the terms and conditions under which Atco will operate and maintain streetlights within the municipality. Atco owns all of the streetlights and decorative streetlights within the city. Within this, there are two different classes, either invested or non-invested. Our current inventory has a mix of both of these, invested and non-invested. The difference between the two classes is that with the non-invested lights, the city is responsible for paying the energy, the repairs, the maintenance, the installation, and the end-of-life costs associated with those lights. When we have invested streetlights, they are paid for at a constant rate monthly to Atco to keep the lights in good working order. The lifespan for streetlights is expected on average to be about 25 years. Many of our non-invested streetlights are at that stage, with the average being around an age of 19 years. So administration worked on this as well, used a consultant, EJP Consulting, to review the proposal and make a recommendation. The EJP concluded that the city is better off pursuing the LED conversion and accept Atco's proposal to transfer its lights from non-invested to invested rate class, and upon acceptance, of course, to participate in the conversion program. So just to conclude, acceptance will evenly distribute costs over the budget cycle rather than fluctuating operating or capital expenditures. It will allow the city to catch up backlog repairs at a fraction of the estimated cost, and it will allow us to action the conversion to LED. The proposal from Atco is more cost-effective than the status quo. The LED conversion will reduce the city's future energy consumption and maintenance costs compared to high-pressure sodium, as well as increase the fixture's lifespan. Finally, by accepting the proposal, the responsibility of administration of inventory and timely repairs and maintenance will no longer fall within the scope of the city, but rather with Atco, who have the necessary expertise to support and maintain this critical infrastructure effectively. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Whiteway. Open it up to counsel for questions. Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, I don't have a question. I'm just fully supportive of moving forward with this.
Okay, so I have a full queue. If you're not in the queue, if you're all looking just to do business, that's great. However, I think some of you probably have questions. Counselor Berg, do you have questions?
I have one question.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So my question is more of a terminology, where it says, I think there's 29 private lights. Can you elaborate what private means? Is it individual business? Again, I just would like more information on that term.
Recognizing Ms. Gardner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The private lights are essentially lights within Muscati Park. So frequently, city staff, our assigned traffic signals crew, go out and replace those lights. These would now become invested lights that Atco would repair.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just kind of going back to our last conversation about light illumination here, that lights last about 25 years. I'm just wondering if we enter into this agreement, and we chose later on to up, change our light standard, if we wanted to remove every light that was 25 years old, every pole that was 25 years old, and said, hey, we're just, we're moving on. Are we allowed to within this contract if we move forward, if we want to make changes where maybe there's 500 lights we want to pull out of our system in 25 years as they age out? Are we allowed to do that if we sign this contract?
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So Atco will do pretty much anything we'd like us to do. So if we say to them, we'd like to remove those lights, we would. It just would be, we would have to pay for it. So if we were, these agreements for, over the, what we would owe what was left of the agreement. Does that answer your question? So if we, if we paid 10 years into an agreement, and the agreement was for 20 years, we would still owe the 10 years left if we were moving that light out.
Okay, so from understanding, each light's individually set up that way, where if we said we want to get rid of the street, and our 20-year-old lights, we're paying for five years?
Essentially.
Okay. And could I have one other one, Mayor Clayton?
Sure.
Just, you know, signing, move the contract and sign forward. Can you just walk me through what happens if they don't repair something, or what that process looks like? Like, is administrative still, we field the call for the streetlight that's broken, we let Atco, we put the service order in, Atco fixes the issue, problem solved. But I guess my question, is there anything in this contract that, there's labor issues, and Atco doesn't get around to fixing streetlights for two months, or a broken light that's been hit by a car for months? Is there anything that we have for clause that we would get penalties or fees would go back to them if they don't service our, our city well?
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes. So we would ask for a new agreement. We would open up the franchise agreement. And then they would have 14 days with which to make those repairs. And then if they don't make those repairs within the 14 days, they would reduce our bill for that particular light. So we do track. So we've encouraged residents to report through the contact center, all lights, any streetlights that are out. And then we track them, and we follow up with Atco currently every two weeks, and we ensure that, what is the status of that repair. So that's what we're currently doing, and that would, that would continue, to ensure that they're repairing the streetlights in a timely fashion.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to mention, I see a couple other counselors in the queue. If you have questions for administration, great. If you wanted to discuss or debate the business that is coming up, I ask that you hold off. Okay, Counselor Teason? Okay, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for Ms. Whiteway. If the city were to go forward with this proposal to convert the non-invested to invested streetlights, what would that do to our operational budget for our annual power costs based off of those streetlights?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The increase will be $600,000 to the operating budget, whether we accept the proposal or not. It'll be the same budget implications in both scenarios.
So why is that?
Because currently, we are short on our repairs and maintenance budget to meet what's expected going forward. It is approximately the same cost to pay for it on a monthly bill for the investment. So it ends up being about $600,000 in both scenarios.
Okay. So one way or another, we're going to spend $600,000 either over the duration of 25 years replacing and updating these streetlights, or just paying extra power utility costs?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you. And just to clarify, it is for the program, so it's for Atco to get their investment. That's their investment. It isn't any change to our consumption. It's not a change to the actual rate of electricity being consumed by the streetlights. So it's essentially a shift from paying as required or just paying monthly on our bill. And in both situations, it's approximately $600,000 in our operating budget.
Okay, so now I'm just a little more confused. Sorry, just one more question, just to clarify for myself. So if we were to give these streetlights to Atco under this agreement, sale and purchase and stuff, our power costs wouldn't go up with those streetlights that we transferred over to Atco?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Our operating budget will increase $600,000. My apologies, I was just clarifying that it wasn't a consumption change or any of that, but it is an additional charge, yes, of $600,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. My question is off Counselor Plott's question. So is there any movement in this contract to, say, swap out lights? So if there's new development, which hopefully we keep growing, can we swap out new and when that 25-year-old light post is, you know, done? As far as replacing that 25-year-old one, can we swap if we wanted to? I'm just looking at movement in the contract.
Ms. Whiteway.
I'll ask if Ms. Gardner could take that one, please.
Okay, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm sort of trying to make sure I'm understanding your question. So you're saying if there was a new development and we took some lights out of an older development and put them into the newer development?
Not take the lights out, but if it so happened that there's new development, and at the same simultaneously, there is old light posts that whether we decide to keep them or remove them, according to like Counselor Plott, can we pay towards the new set versus the ones that we potentially could move out?
Ms. Gardner.
Do you understand?
I think so. So if there was surplus lighting that from, say, engineering was doing some road repairs and the rehab, and they took out some lights, could we use those lights again in a new build?
No, no, no. Just in a new build, there is new lights going in, so that would increase the number for our city. But if we're talking about removing lights out of places that we feel we have too much, can we swap the financial piece to the new ones versus? Are you stuck with however many lights, and then you just keep adding as we develop?
I believe that, like I said before, that Atco will do, you know, whatever's necessary. And I'm going to sort of refer to what Ms. Donnelly said about the TAC guidelines and lighting. If we were reducing the lighting and it was below TAC guidelines, Atco would have us sign a waiver. So that would be the risk that would, could occur, is that we're assuming risk if we decrease lighting levels.
Recognize CEO Nicolai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a very good question. I think the framework through which this can be observed is all the rights, responsibilities, and remedies that we have owning the lights are the same if Atco owns the lights. What changes is, Atco's a regulated utility, and so they operate this through economies of scale that we can't get at. They just do this on a very large scale. Their purchasing power, their labor costs are amortized over a much bigger book of business. So two things happen. Atco operates effectively, more efficiently than we do because of their size. So that's a driver on the cost that'll take it down. The safety net for us turning these over is that Atco's a regulated utility. So two things are regulated with regard to street lighting. One is the degree of leverage, so how much debt can they put against the lights versus how much equity can they put against the lights? And that's regulated on a dynamic basis through the provincial regulator, as is the rate of return that Atco can achieve on the equity that they put into them. So our protection comes through provincial regulation. The advantage essentially comes through the fact that this is a core business for Atco, and they can do it cheaper. But we still determine the lighting standards within the community. We still determine how they go in, where they go in. And Michelle is absolutely correct. If that drops below a TAC standard, as a prudent operator, Atco will say, well, you're going to accept the liability for that, which is essentially what council would do if they were doing this themselves.
Right. I didn't realize that. But it was according to Counselor Plott's first question, so just in alignment with that, but thanks.
Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My apologies if I'm asking a question that got covered last time we met, but I'm still confused by Counselor Plott's question. I never knew streetlights could be this complicated. I'm still not understanding the 25-year term in terms of, is it financial 25 years or a lifespan of the light 25 years? So I get if we sign this, and there's a brand-new streetlight, that we're paying for that streetlight for the 25 years, or we're buying it out if we get rid of it in 10 years. But if we sign the agreement today and there's a light that's 20 years into its 25-year life cycle, are we committed to that old light for 25 years or five years, just remainder of its life cycle?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So it would be based on the useful life. So the five years remaining is what the contract for that light is based on.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So I see no further questions. I'm going to go back to Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think one of the things that maybe we're not remembering is Atco already owns all of the light standards. The city of Grand Prairie does not own the light standards. We only own the service part. So I will make the motion that we accept the Atco Streetlight Conversion Proposal, which would use $95,468 of the funds from Atco to convert 23 private lights, 150 to 400 watt lights, and four 1,000 watt lights to LED, and $522,000 to the catch-up of the backlog of streetlight repairs, which we have attached to our agenda is option A, B, C, et cetera. And secondly, I would allocate, move that we allocate the remaining funds received from the proposal to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And in speaking to this motion, I think it's important to remember that by, the faster we convert our streetlights to LED, the more savings we will have in consumption of power. And we know that power consumption remains a significant issue for the city of Grand Prairie. In addition to power consumption, LEDs also provide significantly less light pollution as they radiate toward the earth and not up into the sky. And so I think that's an additional thing that's very important to remember. By moving to the agreement with Atco to create an invested service, we can make all of those changes much more rapidly than if the city were to try and staff those changes ourselves. And so it's the most financially obvious answer to that question of how can we move forward more quickly with electrical savings and with light pollution reduction? So I would ask council to support this motion on those two tenets.
Thanks, Counselor Blackmore. I see no one in the queue for discussion or debate on your motion, so I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business for today, starting with the council committee of the whole of June 19th. Counselor Plott.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, it wasn't for committee business. I just was going to make a subsequent.
Okay, go ahead.
Just in light of that we got that report for what we in our packages, I just want to make a motion that admin bring back a report detailing all light standards that are 20 years over, 20 years or older in our community. The reason I would like to see that come back is we've had this discussion, and I just think it's a good timing to follow up on this. It'll probably, we'll talk about TAC. But I'd like to start identifying that so that we can move forward and start saying, maybe we should remove lights, maybe we shouldn't. But I think that's a conversation we'd be having between light pollution and energy savings. Appreciate Counselor Blackmore's comment that, you know, we're switching to LED, which is great, but carbon tax is only going to go up, and, you know, we're spending millions of dollars on light standards now. So I just, I'd like to see admin put that report together and see where it goes. Maybe it doesn't go anywhere, but I know myself has a appetite to get rid of some lights in this community. And maybe I'm the only one, but I think it'd be a good report for us to look at and do a deeper dive of what is the appropriate amount of lighting and not just continue on with copy-paste kind of how we've been doing it. I think it's a great time for us to be looking at this.
Right. That motion is in order. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm inclined to support the motion. I'm just wondering if I could check in. I don't know what member of administration should be appropriate, but I'd just like to understand the scale of the ask. I'm assuming this is a relatively easy ask, but I don't want to assume that before voting on this.
All right. I'll just give Ms. Gardner a second to get settled in. Your mic is on. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Could you, I'm not 100% sure I heard it correctly.
Look, my motion, Ms. Gardner, was just to identify all light standards that are 20 years or older.
And so Counselor Bressi's question is, what is the magnitude of that request?
Mayor Clayton, we have a recent inventory from Atco. I believe it's about eight months old. So we could, I'm not 100% certain it has the age in it, but I could do that. There is 7,000 lights, so if it doesn't have the age, that might be, but I think it does. I just don't want to guarantee it does. So I think it could be a relatively quick report to committee.
Counselor Bressi.
I'm happy to, I'll support the motion based on that, but I just hope that administration checks back with committee if this turns out to be a very burdensome task and sees if this is still something that the appropriate committee wants them to do. But for today, I'm a yes.
Getting the nod from Ms. Gardner, and I know Director Glavine, or Chief Glavine will let us know if it becomes more than expected. Maybe just hang out, Ms. Gardner, just in case. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Maybe I should have thrown in a bit of a debate on the last one. I was just a little intimidated by Counselor Blackmore because, yeah, she usually makes good points, and she could put you in your place real fast. I like this motion, Counselor Plott. I think it's good. You know, a lot of talk has been made about LED conversion, and I'm totally bought in. I'm part of the choir. But as much as I've changed over all of my lights to LED and my consumption has gone down, the cost for power, in fact, is almost, well, it's more than double of what it was since I converted all my lights. So I know that this last deal is a beneficial deal for Atco because, as you stated, you know, the carbon taxes come in July 1st. We're probably going to get more carbon taxes coming forward in the future. I'm not wishing on that. But if there's a way that we can still provide adequate, safe lighting in our community without draining their pockets on the consumption rates, because even though consumption's going down, the rates are going up, so it might be a good exercise for future mindfulness on how we can reduce our electrical footprint.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm still really curious what we would need to do if we wanted to turn out half our lights for half the night. And if you could access that information easily while doing this other report, that would be awesome. If not, we can address it at a later time.
So can I just, can I answer? And if I'm wrong, you can correct me? My understanding is, once we switch over, we have the capacity to be able to adapt the new lights to that, but currently, we're not planning to implement that system, correct?
Correct, Mayor Clayton. There's also, we pay a fixed rate for the lights. So by turning the lights off for two or three hours and, say, every fifth light, we would, we may still be paying for that fixed rate. So it's, we don't pay, they're not metered. So that would be one of the issues if we were to own our own streetlights. They're not metered lights. We pay a set rate, and every light, depending on the voltage of the light, is how, what the rate is. So we would have to explore whether that would make much difference from a dollar savings perspective.
Can I understand that? I'm just curious why other communities would do that if their power consumption remained the same, and if it's simply because of light pollution, well, that is a consideration as well. But I'm thinking if they're not metered and our overall power bill goes down for streetlights, there's a savings there. So it wouldn't be an immediate, it would take a while to work that savings out.
Ms. Gardner.
No, and we can, I can ask these questions and have them in the report as well.
Perfect. Thank you. And just a comment to Counselor Plott in regards, I'll support your motion, but I think that there's a few people around the table that have interest and passion in seeing future developments be of a different lighting standard. So I suggest that you bring that to the appropriate standing committee for consideration in the future. What does the future look like in lighting in new developments? Because that's an easier task than the one that's currently being requested. Yeah. All right, so I see no one else in the queue for discussion or debate on Counselor Plott's motion, so I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Okay, I'll just double-check quickly before I move on to committee business. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll move on to committee business. First item in the list of committee business today is the council committee of the whole held June 19th. Counselor Blackmore.
I'd move that council adopt the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held June 19th as presented.
Right, thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 9.1.1, the community group funding. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council approve the 2024-2025 operating funds as presented in Table 1, which does prescribe community group funding.
All right, that motion is appropriate. Recognize Counselor Bressi with discussion or debate.
Great, yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I did chair a committee, and I still have a net change my mind. I'm going to be a no to these allocations because I don't think they're sufficient over the three-year period, over the two-year period, sorry. For me, we're proposing to keep operational funding we're giving to community groups flat, which means as the city grows and as these organizations face inflation, we're giving them less real dollars to do the important work they do. I look at our strategic plan, and we've got outcomes such as fierce community pride, active lifestyle, safety, attracting people to our region, housing, taking care of youth to seniors. And when I look at our allocation list, there's so many groups that are contributing to these strategic outcomes in ways that we just can't, either because government has its limits, or because they're able to leverage volunteers and donors better, and grants better than we can. So for me, I just think that this is something that if we're going to be growing the city's operational budget over the next few years, we should also be growing our community funding over the next few years. So I can't support this overall allocation because I believe it's insufficient over 2024, 2025.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for your comments, Counselor Bressi. I actually really agree with you. And I'll just point out one, one example that, as the weekend went over, I just wanted to see the extra, extra close-eye look at the evaluations of every group. And just one of them was the Center for Creative Arts, who came to us about two months ago saying that about 90% of their operational funds that we give them actually just go to keeping the lights on. They don't go to staff, they don't go to programs, they don't go to anything. And so we gave them a bit of an increase, but that was about $12,000 that leaves them. So I think we bought them about 8% of room to keep the lights on, and we know that we got another tax increase for the carbon tax coming up in July. And I'm fairly certain, within a few months, the extra money that we gave them is going to bite them in the butt. And I think we need a bit more thought and consideration, as we've done in the past, stretching this out right up until budget. I don't know if I want to stretch it. I don't know if I want to stretch it till budget, but I would definitely like to have more conversations on what the appropriate amounts are, whether we're increasing them by a percentage, by inflation or whatever. But the way, the way I see it is that just as the Center for Creative Arts as an example, there are many organizations that are going to be struggling to keep their lights on and we should be taking that into mindful consideration.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess around that, my concern is, is that for every increase that we do give, that's going to be a greater tax burden on everybody that is also going to have to pay their home heating bills and their own power. So I love the groups and I love what they do, but what we're just simply doing is spreading the burden to the taxpayers. So I support the groups. There's a lot of them that as I reviewed it, I thought I would love to give them more money. But how much is enough and where does it stop? And so that's kind of where I sit. And, and of course, I would love to give out more money, but is there more money?
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. Just a question for administration. When, when you were talking to all these organizations, I'm not sure who I'm looking at here.
Chief Lemieux.
Chief Lemieux. You've had conversations with each of these organizations for the upcoming years, correct? And they were comfortable with these allocations?
Thanks, Chief Lemieux. And I see Ms. Beberdorf is here, but feel free to comment and.
Yeah, I think I will ask Ms. Beberdorf to comment as she analyzes this recommendation very closely.
Thank you. Ms. Beberdorf.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So when we create the recommendations, they're based on what the funding envelope was for this year. We don't circle back to let them know what the recommendations are going to be. And this is just based on the, the money that we have available. So we're making our recommendations based on that and not necessarily going back to them because we can't expand based on what we currently have approved unless council approves a further increase to the funding envelope.
So just a question attached to that. Did you like assign a dollar amount for past years for these organizations and just move them forward into the upcoming years?
Through the mayor, no, we only approved, sorry, council approved two years in 2021 for '22 and '23, and then council will approve again for the two years. So nothing comes from administration. It's all approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor O'Toole.
Yeah, I truly believe that this is the right way to go. Decisions here at this table are hard sometimes to make and sometimes they're easy. But it was already said by Mr. Berg that we all have our little favorites, but sometimes we just don't have the money to go around and it's going to hurt other people. So.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Blackmore.
I guess this is somewhat of a question of process and probably best answered by either Chief Lemieux or Ms. Beberdorf. The total, you took all of the applications and lined them up against the total amount of funding that you believe is available based on the budget that we set last fall, correct? So that if council would like to increase that pot, it's the pot that needs to get increased. And then you would redirect the funding as per the applications that you've carefully gone through and which probably number in the hundreds. So I guess, Mayor Clayton, my question would be to Counselor Bressey, if you're not happy with the amount in the pot, would the proper motion not be to refer it to fall budget for an increase of funding?
Counselor Bressey.
Thank you, Counselor Blackmore. It's a, I suppose that's a motion, I suppose that's a motion I, I could make, although if council's not interested in increasing funding, then I just don't want to belabor the point. For me, these groups are dealing with two things. They're dealing with constrained funding and they're also dealing with uncertainty about their funding. And if we're going to kick this down the road four months just to say, no, we're not changing anything, then I think that hurts the group, then I, I don't see the point of that, both from our workflow and from what these groups are doing. So for me, the reason I'm voting no against this and encouraging councils vote no against this is because if we vote this down, then I would take that as a signal that council wants to do further work. And maybe that's a budget, maybe not. But I'd take voting this down as a signal that council wants to reexamine this funding. And then we can start figuring out how best to go about that.
And I look at it from a slightly different angle, having at one time been one of the agencies waiting to know what my allocation is for the year. I would rather know what my allocation is today, even if in the future, you know, three months or four months from now, that might be reconfigured and it might increase. I would still rather know what my allocation is today. Because I would have a budget to build and I would have projects to add to the list or eliminate from the list. And so the, the security of knowing what happens today is more important than the fact that there may be a funding increase sometime in the future, should we find some more money for them. Should we find more money for them, our staff would be delighted to reallocate.
I'm going to recognize Counselor Plott and then I'm going to jump in the queue. I will remind council, we don't find money. If we choose to fund money, that's a different thing. Counselor Plott.
The money, the money finding days are behind us. Just a question, either Ms. Beberdorf and probably yourself with your list in front of you. Out of the, the groups that are on that list, would you have an idea of how many have been here five years or more or 10 years or more that we've been funding?
Ms. Beberdorf.
Through the mayor, I would say the majority of the groups in the community section have been funded for a number of years. I don't know the exact number, but there's a significant group of them that have been funded for multiple years. It's mostly the enhancement group, the one year funding that don't typically roll over to the next year.
Okay.
Or they reapply, they could.
I just want other question, probably more for Ms. White. If I, I think it's still around $1.2 million equals a 1% tax increase. Is that still about the number? And so for me, I'm going to go back to Counselor Berg's point. Like, we're giving 2% of every dollar of taxes to charities within our community. And we've got people that are going to the food bank. We've got businesses struggling, although it doesn't seem like a big amount. I think we have to be comfortable with the number. And it's actually a little bit more than 2%. But when I think about that, and if we're honest, the community went around, I don't think everybody gives 2%. And as a community, we're giving 2%. We're also giving 2% where it allows a lot of these organizations to leverage our money to get further money as well. So I'm quite comfortable with the number. I've thought about it over the weekend as well. And, and to that point, I think if the pot gets bigger, there'll just be more money going out. I don't know if we necessarily get the impact that we hope we get out of it. And I agree with Counselor Bressey that we do leverage a lot. But I think when we're giving two and a half million dollars, we're trying to leverage that already. And I just don't know where the number would end to where we didn't think we could leverage it. So unfortunately, I can't support that, even though I know your intent is good. I just can't support it.
All right. Just echoing some of Counselor Plott's comments, I think that I, I absolutely appreciate the process that we do for administration and the time that they spend to work with these community groups to decide whether or not to recommend council that these applications be approved or supported or not. I think that in addition to the money that Counselor Plott mentioned, there are significant other pots of money that we support community groups with, whether it's gift and kind, whether it's through sponsorship, whether it's through large scale tourism. There's many other opportunities in our community. I think that to your point, operating costs are significant. People are struggling to pay their utility bills, to pay their grocery bills. And I can absolutely appreciate what nonprofits and, and community groups are going through these days. I don't think there was a single decision made to not fund something, knowing that a result could be that this organization doesn't, doesn't exist going forward. Administration made these recommendations, in my opinion, based on what are nice to have and need to haves. And so I think that in reality, is if you can talk about operational expenses of our organization, however, money that is spent in our organization on many level creates sustainability, creates an environment for growth, creates a stable organization. And our community groups do, albeit that they do an incredible job, I think that at times, there is some opportunities for inward looking and, and to be fiscally creative in what they can do and what they provide in our community. So although you may think that this impacts services, I think that at times, many of these groups may just have to delay a project or may have to delay expansion. And I think that many people are making those tough decisions right now. So I will support the, the funding as is recommended. With that, I will go to Counselor Blackmore to close, if you choose to.
I think I already closed.
All right. I'll call the question on that. Counselor Bressey.
Bressey opposed.
Counselor Bressey opposed. I'll ask, sorry, that carries seven to two. I'll move to Counselor Blackmore for the second part of the business.
And I move that council approve the 2024-2025 community group funding operating grant allocations as presented in Attachment 1. And again, my argument remains the same. These organizations need to know what their funding allocations are so that they can move forward to other grant applications and make plans for their future fiscal years.
Okay, that motion is in order. Counselor Bressey.
Great, thank you. I, I, I'm looking at some of the funding and I'm thinking, hey, that's too low, but that's because the total envelope's too low. I do want to, so I will be voting in favor of this because I want to commend the work of administration with the constrained envelope, I think more than I've ever seen in previous years. Really good due diligence was put into figuring, making the hard decisions of what to recommend to us and where limited funding should, limited funding should go. And so I just really do want to thank administration. No, this is a really hot potato. It takes a lot of work and there's no easy way to do this. And I really do think our process has come light years since when I first got elected to council. And so easy to say, yes, this is the best way to allocate that funding that council set aside.
Thanks for your comments. I see no one else in the queue. I'll call the question. And that carries eight to one. Counselor Blackmore.
And the third motion, I would move that council defer the 2024-2025 capital funding requests to the 2024 budget deliberations as presented in Attachment 2. So this capital funding request will go to budget in the fall.
That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue, so I'll call the question.
Bressey in favor?
Plott in favor.
That carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Counselor Blackmore. Moving on to item 9.2, the Invest GP Committee meeting held June 20th. And I'll look to Counselor Plott for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the GP Invest Committee held June 20, 2023 as presented.
That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Bressey, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Bressey in favor? That carries unanimously. You have one item of business, Counselor Plott.
Yeah, we had a delegation come in from the storm. And so I guess I'm just going to look to administration to see how they want to present this or open this up.
So I'll look to Ms. Ridgway for introduction. I can just summarize in the sense that there was, there was multiple asks from the committee. And if you wanted to highlight the ask, Ms. Ridgway, and then possibly Counselor Plott may have business arising from those requests.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Are we on?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, through the mayor. There was three requests, one for deferral of the loan, one for a deferral of ICE time usage, and one of the deferral of the facility fee. Looking for council recommendations on the path board.
So just to expand on those, the first request, and I'm going to do them in reverse order, I apologize, to offer ICE at city ranks for youth development programming, which includes summer camps, fall and winter skill sessions, and junior storm spring hockey at no cost. This benefit equates approximately $35,000. The second request being to waive the Bonnet's Energy Facility Fee for the '23-'24 season, which is also approximately a $30,000 benefit. And the third request being to forgive the storm loan, which equates to, there's been $71,000 paid to date with the total amount going of $158,794.
So I'd be happy to make the first motion that the city waived the Bonnet's Energy Place Facility Fee for the 2022, or '23-'24 season for $30,000-ish benefit?
Okay, so that motion in order, is in order. That's to waive the facility fee for the upcoming '23-'24 season. That motion's in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Counselor Bressey.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I've really been wrestling with what to do with these requests over the weekend. And this is one that really does make sense to me. It's gift and kind, where the city is very generous with nonprofit groups of a whole bunch of different stripes. And this is a nonprofit group with gift, with gift and kind. So this is a really sensible one for a sport. The other requests are harder for me, but this one is a large no brainer to me, especially for one season going forward, when it's hopefully the organization's fiscally sustainable in a year or two, maybe, maybe not. But for this season, for sure, this is an easy yes for me.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Plott, how do you, oh, nevermind, you got in there. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Plott, you had other business potentially?
Helps if I turn my mic on. I'd make a motion that the city offer the ICE rinks for both youth hockey development programming, which would include summer camps, fall and winter sessions, and junior team spring hockey at no cost, which is about a $35,000 benefit. And just to speak to this, I think one of the things the Storm's really trying to do is get more engaged and active in our community with our youth. And I, and I think that's a great platform to do. There's also revenue that comes from the Storm from these. And we also get kids that come from out of, out of area that, that are going to be attending these camps. So there is an economic development spin of this as well. I appreciate we're losing some revenue from the city, but I know there's going to be some players that are going to come to our, our city to come to camps that the Storm are going to put on. It also gives a lot of opportunities, I think, for the Storm within their system to help their coach development and other areas of it. So hopefully you guys can support this one.
That motion is in order. I'll give a moment and see if anybody has discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor Plott in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Plott, any other business arising?
For me, I know there's a few colleagues struggling with, with the overall forgiveness of the loan. So I'm, I'm just going to ask if there's any way that we could have administration come back with, and this is for me, maybe. I'm open for discussion with everybody else. But I guess for me, I've heard a lot from the community about concerns of a complete forgiveness and what that could look like. Certainly not opposed to it by any means. I just, I think for me, there's a little bit more information that I'd like to see happen. But I'm, so I can't make the motion right now. But if anybody else on council wants to make a motion, that would be great. But for me, I'd be probably looking for a little bit more information.
Counselor Bosch, you had a comment?
I do. I do understand the forgiveness piece. And community-wide, we have to look at that in an overall, large picture. I do, however, want to see if we can find some opportunities through administration to help out this club. And in saying that, for me, I do believe that, you know, we as a council and a community have a responsibility to this organization. Not every city or town has an AJHL team. And we need to be cognizant that we respect what we have here in the community. I think we have a number of community members who have put money in, in their own, from their own pocket into this organization to build something. And we, as an overall community, and as a council, have to share some of that responsibility too. So if we can help them in some way, I would appreciate that. It speaks to our quality of life. It speaks to including fierce community pride, active lifestyle, attraction, youth support and seniors. Now, seniors, we can maybe get the old time senior storm players out there. We can fit that in that, in that term. Culture and pride and community involvement. These boys that go around the community and support schools and organizations, I, they are ambassadors to our community. So this is not a ordinary organization. They have to have two sides. They need a, a winning side, which, you know, we all want as our community, but so do all the other cities who have an AJHL team. They want theirs to be the winning team too. But, and then we have the business side. So I think, I think this one's different than most organizations. So I would like to make a motion to ask administration to look for other opportunities to help these guys out.
So can I just ask for a little bit more on that? So is this?
For once, I'm talking too little?
I can't believe I just asked Counselor Bosch to speak more, but market. I can't believe I just asked Counselor Bosch to speak more, but mark it on the counter. Anyways, regardless of that, Counselor Bosch, maybe, could you be a little bit more definitive in what you're expecting administration to do? What, are they coming with further information? Are they coming back?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to see further information in regards to, maybe this timeframe isn't, isn't fitting. Maybe it's over a much more length in time to pay this loan back. Maybe it is forgiveness in interest or a lower interest. I just think that there has to be opportunities to help. Giving money to organizations and then saying, well, you never have to pay it back, that won't bode well for, for us as a, as a council in the future throughout other organizations, but certainly there's ways that we can manage this so that this community organization thrives. So whether it's changing the, the number of years, the interest, maybe it's grants, I do know they wanna look at the Centennial Cup, maybe it's large-scale grants. You know, we have to realize that there's 30 home games here, and each home game brings 1,000 to 1,500 people per game. And we look at other organizations that we've given money to. I'll use Bear Creek Folk Festival as an example. They had approximately 3,500, 4,000 people last year, and we gave them 75,000. So, you know, these numbers are significant, not to say others aren't, but we, you can't take it for granted for a community organization who's been here for 30 years. I just don't wanna forget them. I don't know what more to say.
I think, I think, fair enough, and I see that legislative services has put a motion for it, and, and I'll read it in case, and you can agree that it addresses what you were hoping to capture. Counselor direct administration to bring back a report with further information regarding forgiveness or amendment options for the Grand Prairie Storm loan. If that in, sort of captures what you were thinking?
It does.
Okay, so the motion is in order. Open for discussion or debate, recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and I was actually gonna jump in much earlier and say I'm all in favor of postponing it. Let's buy some time, let's see how things go. Not ready to write it off yet, but a question for Ms. Whiteway. Where was this money originally funded? So should we forgive it? Where was this money originally funded from, and what impact would it have on our budget?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will have to just go back, if you can give me a minute, I can figure out where the original funding was for the $200,000.
We can come back to you.
Thanks.
And, and if, if preferred CFO Whiteway could come back in the report, seeing that, if, assuming this motion is passed. But if you haven't easily, I will come back to you. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just one thing I would like to ask administration in the interim while we're getting this report, are there, are we currently allowing the Storm to defer, or is there payments taken while we're doing this report?
So to my knowledge, and Ms. Whiteway can confirm, when there's been deferral, it's come to council for approval.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Clayton, that's correct. Each time, it's gone forward to council for approval.
Okay, so I appreciate that, the motion, and I'll be supporting it, but I think we might, might wanna make another motion, it sounds like, to defer it for 60 days or something for at least now, to give, to give time for administration to get a report for us so that, you know, we can, we can revisit it then, but if, if the cash flow's a real concern now, maybe it's at least deferring it till we get that report back. But one, one question that I had on the report, and, and something I guess what I was looking for is, you know, when, when they come in, they did a great job as delegates presenting to us, they were talking about other debt. And, you know, part of me was fine with saying, let's forgive the debt, but I, I don't know what other debt's sitting in the, in the Storm, and I wonder if that's a bigger picture for admin to work with them on, is, is there a total debt consolidation package or something the city can help out with where it's not, we're doing this today, and they're trying to slowly limp along and pay out partners and pay out investors, and, and the stress just never goes away. So I think for me, if it's possible to work with the Storm on what's the overall debt picture, and how can it work on the big picture? I know we're talking about the 141,000 or 140-some-thousand and change today, but that might just get them through another year, and I think the bigger thing for this organization, if they're trying to change and go the right direction, that I think they're going, it's a long-term strategy with the city, kinda like Counselor Bressey's point with community group funding. I mean, we're kinda helping them for next year, but it'd be nice to have the, the conversation, what is, what is the five or 10-year plan with the Storm from the city's perspective, and I think that might layer into that for us. So if, if admin could work with, with the Storm to, to, to just give us a little bit more information on our world debt, I would appreciate that as part of the report.
Ms. Whiteway, if you're ready, I'll come back to you, but if not, I have other people in the queue.
I was just gonna answer the previous question. Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And it took me a minute, but we wouldn't have funded it from a source because it's going to be repaid. So the impact would be a write-off of a bad debt, or a loan, or however you wanna phrase it, and therefore would become an expense for the city for 2023. So it would cause a variance from our break-even budget, so then we would have to therefore find other ways to balance this year.
All right. Sad's answered a question. Counselor Berg? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, actually, I might have been in favor of approving this outright. I mean, the forgiveness of the loan is about $170,000. When I go over our community group funding that we just did, I mean, we've got almost $400,000 collectively going to the Curling Club. We're potentially building a recreation center, a domed recreation center for, for field sports. We give operational and capital funding to Nighthawk every year, and we've done a similar loan like this to the Gymnics Club that they've now officially paid off as well at the Eastlink Center. So part of it is, is being engaged and having our community engage and giving them a, a good quality of life. So I appreciate everything that Counselor Bosch said. As far as the deferral and getting more information, I'm, I'm game for that. I'm also, I'm also game for, you know, not allowing them as they make savings on the motions we've already made to, sorry, one sec. Yeah, so anyways, just to make sure that the savings that they get on the arena rentals and other stuff, that it just doesn't go to more accrued interest and it comes off their, their, their bottom line. So I can support this motion for waiting. I'm hopeful that we don't have to accrue any more debt. I'd also be inclined to, to just waive it altogether completely and talk about community group funding and what we can do. But that's just me. I'm, I'm not an open wallet. You guys know me just as well as that. I like to, I like to get bang for my buck, and I think community groups and organizations like the Storm do that for, for our community. They make our job easier in making people enjoy the life that they live here in Grand Prairie. Just a reminder too, even though they're kind of a for-profit agency, there's a not-for-profit element to the Storm too, in a sense, they fit right in with our other community groups. So I'll support this motion, and I'll probably support even more going forward from today.
Counselor Bressey.
Great, thank you. I, I think it's important to note they're a fully nonprofit organization. There's no private owners taking dividends or equity out of this other than loan, and loan repayments, and I know that's something that a lot of the community doesn't understand, so really important to note that. I've got, I'm, I'm gonna suggest an amendment, and I have a feeling it's not gonna be taken as a friendly amendment, so I'm happy to make the motion to amend it if Counselor Bosch prefer, but that's for me, I'd like to strike forgiveness from this motion. I'm happy to discuss and look at amending options, but for me, forgiveness of the loan is off the table at the mo, at the moment. And I won't argue for that yet unless we figure out if it needs to be motion.
Okay. I won't take that motion, because, or that amendment, because I think we're looking at, at features, and this is the reason why I brought this up, because I don't want, maybe I'm not a good poker player, but I don't want this to be a no, and then the Storm doesn't receive some help. So if we can find alternative ways to help them, if forgiveness isn't one that, that we as an entire council choose, I still want something for them to, to help them out of this concern that they're in right now. So that's the reason for, for this motion and, and the speech, is to make sure something does happen positive for them, instead of potentially risking a no, that it's over at forgiving the loan.
Counselor Bressey?
So in that case, I would like to move that we amend the motion by striking forgiveness in the motion. And just to, just to speak to this, I'm very open, I'm very open to amending the loan to, I'm very, very open to deferring it for the year. I heard a priority is to pay back the SUSE grants, so that they make sure they get the full maximization of that, and it should be a priority for the organization, we should support that, and for other reasons. I'm very open to deferring the loan for this year. I'm very open to looking at the interest we're charging on this loan, and either deferring or eliminating or tweaking that, so I'm very open to looking at options to amend the loan. And, but for me, just to say, at this point, to say we're just gonna write the loan off completely is something I'm not prepared to do right now. Maybe I'm prepared to do it in a year, but I'm not prepared to do it right now. And I think is this organization's trying to figure out what their next steps are? If council doesn't actually have interest in forgiving this loan, only amending it, then I don't think we should give them hope that we might forgive this loan in the next couple months. And so I would encourage council to support this. Just to put it into context, it's $171,000 is about two and a half years of inflationary increase for our other community groups. And so writing that money off at this point isn't something that I'd be open to, so I hope council supports this amendment.
So that amendment is in order. Discussion or debate on the amendment. Counselor Blackmore?
I will not support the motion to remove forgiveness from the sentence, because I think that that still is very much on the table for other members of council. And I also, I go back to what I said when we were talking about community groups. Having a definitive answer today is sometimes more important than having a maybe out there sometime in the future. And so I think that regardless of whether or not this motion passes, or, or whether Counselor Bosch's motion passes, there still needs to be a follow-up motion that gives a definitive timeline to our response to the Storm. Holding, holding the carrot out there at the end of the stick is inappropriate at this time, I feel.
Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I like forgiveness and amendment both in there. Again, using Counselor Bosch's poker term, I wanna see all the cards on the table, and so that that way I can make a, a decision based on all the information and not just part of it. Although, again, I do, as I'd mentioned before, all in favor of deferring, but I wanna make a fully educated decision at one time rather than over two times.
Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, thank you very much. Similar to Counselor Blackmore and Counselor Berg, I wanna see all cards on the table here. Just wanna remind that every community organization, including the Storm, has had, like us at the city, had to endure the last three years of COVID, which definitely cuts into how many people they were allowed to have in a building that was out of their control, as well as when they were able to allow people back into the building. People are still a bit uncertain and nervous about what that might mean in their personal lives, so that definitely had an impact on professional sports, and I do consider the AHL professional in its own right. Yeah, forgive and you shall be forgiven. So I hate to get holy here, but I'm all for it. Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, once again, I'll use the term, all the cards on the table. I wanna see what our options are, and with that, I think that we need to really put some hard thought into what we're going to do in the future for the Storm. And if we can help them pay off a debt and get them back on the ground and the COVID bug gone away, I think there may be some options or opportunities for them to generate a little bit more money in the future. Thank you.
All right, so I see no one else in the queue. I'll call the question on the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Bressey to close.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I really echo Counselor Blackmore's statements that we should give certainty to this organization. And so if you can't see yourself voting yes for forgiveness in the next, in the next month or two, then please vote no to this motion, so they know that that is off, off the table. Don't be saying, hey, I just don't wanna say no today, and I wanna kick that down the table. Let's give them the certainty if we're not gonna forgive the loan this summer of saying so right now. So please vote yes to this motion.
All right, so a vote yes is to amend the motion to remove the word forgiveness. A vote no would leave the word forgiveness in the motion. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that motion is defeated eight to one. So back to the original motion, I'll see if there's any other discussion or debate on the motion from Counsel Bressey, or sorry, Counsel Bosch. Seeing no one, I'll give Counsel Bosch an opportunity to close.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I think I pretty much said all I can say. I get this, this way of life for a lot of parents in our community, whether it's hockey or volleyball, or, you know, soccer. It's important, it's important for our community, so we need to keep this one 30, 30 more years. I won't be here after that, so, you know, whatever, but until I'm gone, then it's gotta stay. 30 years? Good God.
Call the question on Counsel Bosch's motion. Please vote. And that's carried unanimously. Counselor Blackmore?
And I would move that council provide Grand Prairie Storm with an interest moratorium until such time as we make a decision regarding their loan.
I think that motion's in order. I had a question from Ms. Whiteway. I see their next payment is due in July. What's a reasonable expectation for this report to come back to council?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I believe we could turn it around within, right before council break.
Okay, so by the end of July. So this motion is in order, it would mean that the, if approved, that there would be no interest secured and the accrued rather on the July payment. So open it up for discussion or debate. Counselor Blackmore?
As I said.
I apologize, Counsel Plot. You're still in the queue 'cause your mic's on.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just wondering, do we need to add a date? Like, you know, might come back in July? I'm just wondering if we should say this is until October 1st or something, 'cause, just 'cause we get the report back, we might still need further information. And I, and again, I want us to be a, a good conversation, not just a, hey, we, we moved this along for now. I think it's a bigger conversation with the Storm, so just wondering if we open to a friendly amendment of maybe October 1 or something, which gives admin and us lots of time to get that dealt with.
The reason I didn't include a date was because if it takes us longer, they get an interest waived, waived for a longer period of time.
So, yeah, I guess we're not doing payments at all.
I guess maybe Counselor Blackmore, would you take a friendly amendment? Or do you see the motion in the queue? Does it, does it capture what you're thinking? I just, if, there we go. So now it's good. Counselor Grant, the, council grant the Grand Prairie Storm an interest memoriam until further information is brought back to committee? It should be, yeah, moratorium, not memoriam. Interest-free moratorium. Okay, that captures it? Perfect. Counselor Bressey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Maybe I don't understand the terms of loans, but I just question if this motion's needed. My understanding is they're not accruing interest daily, weekly, or monthly, or anything like that, that they just accrue the interest every time a payment's due? And if I'm understanding correctly, we're gonna be receiving this report prior to their next payment, so I'm just curious from administration, does this motion even impact anything?
I'll ask CFO to address that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We are still accruing interest on the loan, so.
So I guess, when do we accrue the interest? Like, is it weekly, monthly? Is it just every time a payment's made?
Ms. Whiteway?
The, the payments are based on, sorry, I'm gonna pull up the amortization schedule at the same time here. Okay, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we have made it so that they have set payments on a quarterly basis, so that way the interest does accrue as the loan progresses, but they have a set payment with a fluctuating principal and interest being applied.
Counselor Bressey?
Yeah, so I guess just my comment is, I, I don't know what this motion accomplishes in terms of, before they make their next payment, we're gonna receive this report anyways and have more discussion, discussion and debate, and so even without this, without this motion counts fully in its ability not to charge, charge them the interest.
Yeah. I appreciate your concerns. I guess the, maybe the better motion is about regards to a payment, because there's a payment due in July, and this, this information won't come back till, till some point in July. So, Counsel Berg?
Yeah, I was thinking of a motion.
But we have a motion on the floor.
But I'll, I'll kinda throw the idea out, where we would defer the upcoming July payment to the end of the term. And again, I know that we'll be discussing our interest rates and different things coming up, but I was just kinda curious as well, for CFO Whiteway, what is the amount that is due in July?
Ms. Whiteway?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the scheduled payments are at $12,267 each quarter, so that would be the payment that's due in July.
Okay, and then the reason that I also like that too, is it gives a small measure of certainty, getting back to Counsel Blackmore's point, where they at least know for July whether they have to come up with that payment or not. whether they have to come up with that payment or not. So, so again, following the, the current motion, one way or another, that's a motion that I'd be prepared to do.
So can I just ask, look for a friendly amendment from Ms., Counselor Blackmore, that it be in a payment-free moratorium until further information is brought back to committee?
Well.
It's your motion, it's up to you. If not, I'm going to amend it.
From, from my understanding of working in finance, a moratorium meant, means that there is no payment. So an interest-free moratorium means that while there is no payment, there's no additional interest being accrued at that time. So we're, we're saying a moratorium on the loan means that there will be no payment because.
Just the motion isn't worded that way. So I'll check with the CFO. If this, with the motion as worded, would you expect that the Grand Prairie Storm would have a payment due in July 1st?
Yes, as it's written, I would suspect that they would make a payment. However, and I'm not clear, is the interest-free period from their last payment or from the motion made today? So it would be difficult to be able to pinpoint exactly what I was doing with the loan.
So I will reword the motion so that it says council grant the Grand Prairie Storm a payment moratorium and interest-free period from the time of their last payment to the time of their next future payment pending further information being brought back to committee.
Thank you for that clarification. So anybody, I'll give Legislative Services a second to catch up, but for now, any other discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, we will just wait for that to get. And Counselor Blackmore, if you can just confirm that that captures your intent?
It's falling off the bottom of my page. So the next payment may be October 1st, but it also could be longer than that if it takes council longer to make our decision. And so I'm not unhappy with the motion. I think it captures it.
All right, thank you for that. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Do you want to go, do you want something further? That carries unanimously. Counselor Plot, back to you.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, I just need a sec to pop up on my notes here. So just some meeting highlights from our Invest GP Committee. We obviously had a lot of conversation with Storm, so that was, we've dealt with that. And then after that, we had, through Jeff, Mr. Harrop, our Chief Investment Officer, got an update that our Rural and Lowstream has had 307 candidates endorsed and 413 employer applications are in progress. So again, still seeing great opportunities there. The city hosted a booth, joined me with the MD of Greenview and the County of Grand Prairie, the Global Energy Show to highlight our opportunities in the region. So that's my report.
Thanks, Counselor Plot. Moving along to 9.3, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting of June 20th, and I'll look to Counselor Bressi for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held June 20th, 2023 as presented.
The motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. There we go. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, one item of business tonight.
I'd move that council give first readings by law C 1455A, being an amendment to the Municipal Police Commission bylaw.
That motion is in order. There's no discussion or debate. I'm first reading. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second readings by law C 1455A. And just to, just to speak to this, this is updating the Grand Prairie Police Commission bylaw. What happened is we formally is, right now, we are policed by the RCMP, even though we're standing up a municipal service, the RCMP is going to be our police service of jurisdiction and the RCMP detachment commander will be our, in charge of all of our policing in the community until quarter two of 2026. And because he, because the RCMP is going to be doing that, it's important that they get good feedback and advice from the community about how things are going. That's just good practice, but also with recent changes to the Police Act, we're legislatively required to have an advisory committee to provide that RCMP detachment commander with feedback from, from the community. So what this bylaw will do is it will turn the police commission also into a policing committee and commission members will serve the role of police advisory committee members to give regular feedback to our RCMP detachment commander so that he or she can better serve all of our residents. So I hope the council will support this bylaw.
That motion is in order and I see no one in the queue for discussion or debate. Call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C 1455A at this meeting.
That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give third reading to the bylaw C 1455A, being an amendment to the Municipal Police Commission bylaw.
Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question on third reading. That carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It was a really busy meeting. We started off by hearing from Sport Connection and Nighthawk to give the regular report to committee about how the funding we give them is being used and to really impact organizations. So grateful to hear more from them. We heard from Meti Local, that's looking to get some land to build a second elders' carry shelter, and we direct administration to do more work on that so we can make a decision for them in the future. Then we move to our director's service area update. And I think the most exciting thing I heard in there is the city's recently received a grant from the Tamarack Institute to continue the Community Building Youth Futures Project in our community. CBYF's done, been doing great work for the last couple of years, and I'm glad that we're going to step in and make sure that that program continues. And one thing I'm especially excited for is as part of that grant, we're going to hold a very large career in education forum, looking at opportunities for young people to take advantage of in Northern Alberta. So thank you to all of our staff that are biting that project off. The last thing I'll highlight is we had a really interesting report on housing and homelessness funding. There's a lot of pass-through funding that the city receives from federal and provincial governments, both to keep people in housing and to help them when they find themselves out of housing. And so a really good breakdown in where that funding's coming from and where it's being sent by the city. We, committee also directed that a similar report come forward in the future with our family and community support services funding. So really a level of transparency in this grant funding that we haven't had in the past, and I'm really grateful to the work of committee administration to start helping both council and our residents understand more about how those funding dollars are being used to make our community better. And last thing, thank you to Counselor O'Connor, who chaired the last part of the meeting because I had to go away to another commitment.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Moving on to the Financial Administrative Services Committee meeting of June 20th, and I'll look to Counselor Blackmore for introduction.
Yes, I would move that council approve the minutes of the June 20th Financial and Administrative Services Committee.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes, there's a couple of things, although it was a fairly quiet meeting. In finance, administration is continuing with sustainability and process efficiencies for the month-end close, and work continues with departments on budget activities to prepare operating staffing and capital requests for the fall budget. Variance reporting for May is ongoing with all departments. In assessment and taxation, the tax department will be staying open on 6:00 PM Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Friday night of this week, as your taxes are due on, on Friday of this week. And so they're accommodating those who need those extra hours. And we also received a report on the city's borrowing capacity, a little information about how that is calculated and what our restrictions are, and that will be everything.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Moving on to 9.5, the Operational Services Committee meeting of June 20th, and I will look to Counselor Bosch for introduction.
Thank you. I move that council adopt the minutes for the Operational Services Committee meeting held June 20th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Bosch in favor?
That motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I, I guess we can talk about the CHP. Sound attenuation project is expected to be complete, so it should be done for this week because that was last week. A sound study which will be scheduled to take place in July will follow. We had Pollinator Week, June 19th to 25th, as well as GP Grows. And classes for verme composting were delivered to six schools over the past three weeks. Construction and maintenance, of course, if anybody has got their eyes open, they can see all the construction in the city. And so road rehabilitation and overlay, bridge, bridge repair, traffic signal repair, slope repair, just about repair on everything. So that is what, you know, we in, well, Canada, really have to do in the summertime is construction. So Transit Administration is hosting the Youth Advisory Committee in early July for facility tour and show them what, what it takes to run, run a transit system in the city. Parks, playground rototilling is underway. There's 18 picnic tables and red, or four red kiosks being installed at the Musca Sippee corridor. Flower planting and beautification is complete. Mowing is pretty much caught up from the pause during the wildfires. The naturalization is underway in three new areas as part of a pilot project, and more information and response will come out of that by year end. Banding crews assisted in both the Pride Crosswalk and the Residential School Survivors Crosswalk. And then we had, committee asked the mayor to write a letter to the Riva, the county of Grand Prairie requesting access to direct traffic south on 116th Street to the correction line due to the daily delays and increased volume during this construction season, particularly over the bypass. And committee directed administration to bring back a report indicating on how many outdoor water filling stations we have within the parks and trail corridors within the city. So lots going on in, in this committee. So that's what I have to share.
Thanks, Counselor Bosch. Moving on to the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting of June 20th, I will look to Counselor Berg for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held June 20th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. The motion is in order. I will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg, any highlights from your meeting?
Yes, just let me pull it up here. All right, so Chief Peketron updated us on a handful of things. City Clerk, we continue to roll out a bylaw and policy review process across all departments. Corporate Communications, the new Grand Prairie Police Service website has successfully launched, and administration is now supporting the official marketing campaign surrounding the transition to the new police service. Inner Governmental Affairs, of course, we had an election, 87 MLAs. We are developing a strategy around our advocacy priority, priorities, and letting each of these MLAs know what's important to our city and to our region. We had some University of Alberta MD Ambassador Program students, and presentations were very well received by career counselors and students. HR, Municipal Leadership Academy Program and Mentorship Program, designed to grow leaders from within the organization, is now accepting applications with the program beginning in September. And Corporate Marketing, administration is launching a new website to promote sponsorship, advertising, and naming right opportunities. There's a current campaign to sell the naming rights for the Activity and Recreation Center, for the Activity and Recreation Center. And then as an aside, Phase Three of the Grand Prairie Police Service marketing campaign has rolled out. Unaddressed ad mail will go out to all residents in the next two to three weeks. And that's our report.
Thank you for that. Counselor Berg? Just moving on to item number 10, there's one item of correspondence for this evening. And I would look to Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. I will recuse myself from this motion.
All right, Counselor Bosch has declared a conflict. Give her a moment to leave the chambers, and then once she has, I'll recognize Counselor Blackmore.
I move that council appoint Christina McNeil, Brooks-Hoffes, Barbie Jo Mautheson, and Doug Morris to the Grand Prairie Downtown Association Board for the term ending March 1st, 2026. And although it is the Downtown Association who looks for their public board members, they need to be approved by a motion in council. And so that's what this motion is in regards to.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. We'll give Counselor Bosch a moment to come back to the chambers. We will be moving on to item number 11, which is delegation business. We had one delegation here this evening, Rising Above Ministry. I'll look to Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I actually have two motions here, and I'm just going to pull the first one out since they're relatively similar, but they're, they're two totally different asks. So my first motion would be, I'd move that council directs administration to work with Rising Above on extending their lease to up to 40 years on the property they currently. I said up to 40 years because there were some questions about the condition of the building or how long Rising Above would be in there. So if something were to happen, Rising Above moves, or the building crashes or whatnot, I just want to make sure that our, our administration's worked with Rising Above, and we've, we've looked into the future for that, and we've already troubleshooted it before we sign over the lease. I think this is a very reasonable ask. I don't know what the city will do with this. And, and Rising Above has done an excellent job in taking care of the residents inside that facility, as well as ensuring that their rates of recidivism are right down. And I think that has to do with their methods on how they instill that spirit into people and that connection, that hope lives inside them and through them in their actions that they do. So I think this is our first one, and I look forward to any discussion or debate.
So that motion is in order. I will open up discussion or debate. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just got a question about how, what Counselor Thiessen intends by this motion. Is the idea of this motion, hey, we're saying administration, go do this, and they just do it, and the decision's made by council? Or is it, or is the intention to start the process of gathering information, figuring out what this might look like so it can come to council to make a final decision?
Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, thanks for that question. Counselor Bressi, this is the exact reason why I've sort of split it into two motions. One will deal more with land, and that has a bit more of a council focus on that, what we're doing with our land and stuff like that. Are we giving the land? Are we, are we allowing them to build on it and then leasing that portion later? As far as working on the lease, I see that as a purely administrative task, and council doesn't need to be involved in that sort of business when we have experts in-house.
Sorry if I may, Mayor Clayton.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I think I missed, I may, might have misunderstood your motion. If I'm understanding correctly now, you're saying this motion just relates to the current building. Gotcha, nothing new. Okay, then happy to support it.
Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm, I'm happy to support it. I'm just wondering, Counselor Bressi kind of tweaked my thoughts when he mentioned why, why they're not asking for us transferring the land to them. And so I'm, I think there's opportunity for us to transfer land to them as well. So I'm just wondering if, if that's something we're I'm just wondering if that's something we're going to do. Do we need this motion, I guess, or chicken and egg? But you know, my preference would be administration works with them on lease and potential them taking the land. If the land's an option for them to leverage, like we've done with other community groups in Grand Prairie, I'd be probably happier to do that. Fully in support of the motion, I'm just wondering if your other motion's going to talk to you about that, or if that could be part of one motion, because I think it might get administration on the path of both things for Rising Above, and maybe they don't want to, maybe they just want a lease, but I'd like to give them the option of both, I guess.
Yeah, and as you heard Mel say, he's totally game if we want to give the land. Like, that's good. As a councillor, I think it's our responsibility, as council as a whole, to understand what the parameters of that land are. What we're talking about right now is the lease, and what I understood by making this motion is that they just need a long-term commitment from the city in order to be able to apply for funding to develop this new housing construct. That would suffice, or that would be, that would happen through the 40-year lease, and that would buy us time if we want to look at the type of land that we want to give, if we want to extend it over the whole parcel, or what we, or we want to transfer the whole land piece altogether later on. I think this just speeds up the process so that they can start firing their ducks off in a row and get their dominoes falling.
With that said, I'm happy to support, but would be happy if we were looking at them coming back for a land transfer as well.
Council Bosch?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm in the same vein. I'm curious, not unlike what we did with the last organization, is it timely for administration to do some work on land transfer potentially versus lease and giving options? Timelines, like, can we not do this relatively quick, like we would with the lease side of it? Or would you, would administration prefer dealing with the lease and then moving over to a potential options? What's the better way to go around this?
CAO Nicolay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good discussion. I would suggest that we dispense with the lease and solidify the 40-year term so that there's certainty around the circumstances. If there's going to be a subsequent transfer of land, the lease can be nullified and a transfer of land done properly. But I think it's something you'll want to think out and make sure that the land that's being transferred is done so in a manner that council would approve. Administration can go away and extend the lease and give people time to do that deliberation properly.
Council Blackmore.
Well, I don't disagree with CAO Nicolay. I look at what we did with the Grand Prairie Residential Society in that they had a building that they owned on city land, and then when they wanted to use that building to leverage it to build another building, our deal with them essentially froze their ability to leverage that. I don't see why we would, I'm not sure that I believe we need to go through the steps to solidify a 40-year lease when we could simply move forward with the next step, which would require a report coming back to council. I don't see it as a two-step process. And the reason why is because I feel that by limiting these types of situations to a lease really freezes both the land and the building, and I don't see any value to that.
Just going to jump in the queue. I can appreciate council's concerns. My comments would be that an organization came and asked for a 40-year lease. I don't know why we would transfer title when they didn't ask for that. They are comfortable in using the 40-year lease as enough of an assurance to be able to get to go forward with their plans. I don't know why we would transfer title when that wasn't their primary request. So, Council O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I was just wondering, in the city's history, have we ever gave a 40-year lease on any property that anybody's aware of? Like, would this be something unusual? I don't know who to ask.
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm certainly aware we've done 25-year leases. I don't believe there's anything that would stop us from varying that for any specific length of time, whether it be 40, 50, or whatever we chose.
Okay, well, that was only my concern. Thank you.
Council Bressi.
Thank you. I just think it's worth highlighting that this is very different than the GP Residential Society and other transfers, because in those cases, we own the land, they own the building. In this case, we own the land, we own the building. And given the fact that we just spent a lot of money repairing a roof on a building we own, I kind of suspect that maybe that arrangement of us owning the building works for the organization. And frankly, it quite works for me. I'm quite happy to have us responsible for any unforeseen major capital projects that are on this building. So if the organization came forward and said, hey, we want the existing building, I'd be very open to that. But until they actually make that ask, it's this current arrangement of us owning and leasing out for a buck or two a year, and us taking on those big capital risks on a very old building that wasn't custom-built for this type of use really does work for me, because it's such an important organization in our community. I'd hate a nasty surprise for this building to threaten their viability.
Sure, Council Blackmore.
So we own the land, and we own the building, and then they build an addition onto the building. Who owns the addition? And who owns the maintenance of the addition? It would be cleaner, from my point of view, to say, here you go.
I don't know if Mr. Nicolay, if you had comments on the question?
I don't know the definitive answer to that. I would assume that the city would own the leasehold improvements that are done on leased land. The basic premise that I would suggest, we contemplate a two-step, I don't want to get in the debate of council, is there's an adage in real estate that ownership is control. So in the analogy that you offered earlier, the ability to leverage that property and do a improvement to it had to come back to council, and council had the opportunity to either agree with that development and transfer the title of the land to facilitate the leverage, or to not agree with it if they didn't think it was a suitable piece of facility to go on that land. So the prejudice toward a lease would retain that control.
Council, oh, you're out of the queue. Council Bressi. So Council Thiessen to close, if you would like. If seeing none, call the question. That carries unanimously. Council Thiessen, you had another motion?
Yeah, so I'm willing to, I'm willing to be shamed on this motion. I'm looking, I'm trying to imagine what the actual property looks like, but I think we can handle it if I would move that council direct the mayor to write a support, or to write a letter of support for the Rising Above facility to be built on the same land as the current facility.
Okay. That motion is in order. Council Bressi.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, Council Thiessen. I like the end goal, but I think it's premature right now. I'm not ready to say today definitively, yeah, we're going to support this. My two concerns are, I do, I know that I've heard concerns from people in the neighborhood, including the school board, about stormwater and what this looks like for stormwater management, adding hard surface to the site, and I'm sure that that's been considered, it's going to be considered in the plans, but I need to learn a little bit more about what the impacts on other developments, such as a recreational facility, would be by adding this kind of hard surface here. So I think we need to do a bit of work on stormwater. I also think that the neighborhood deserves to have a say in this, and not a veto in it, but have input in it. I don't think we need a long, months and months and months-long engagement process, but people in the community should at least be able to ask a few questions and share their thoughts with council. I know that when Rising Above first went into the neighborhood, there was huge concerns in Avondale, and Rising Above's been a fantastic neighbor. As far as I know, none of those concerns have materialized, and in fact, I've heard community members say very positive things about it. It used to literally be a prison, and you drive past it. Now it's this nice, well-maintained facility where we know good things are happening in. But still, those concerns were there, and I think there will be concerns by some if this gets built there. So I think they do have a right to be able to express those concerns to council and hear how they're going to be addressed before council makes a final decision. So definitely want to get to the point of this building being built. Definitely hope we do it in a very, very timely manner, but I think we're short-circuiting some important process if we just make the decision today.
Council Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I'm glad that you qualified that very, very quickly, because again, looking at their sheet here, project to commence when 65% of the total project costs are committed, which they are estimating to be November 1st. So time is important.
Question for administration, Chief Glavin. Once the development permit is pulled, how much time would the adjacent neighborhood or the neighbors in the area have an opportunity to comment on the development permit?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It would depend upon whether or not it's a permitted use or not, and I don't recall in this case if this is a permitted use. If it's a permitted use, there's no time, it would just be approved.
Okay. So that may address your question. Yeah. Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just so, I was kind of with Council Bressi, but if it is in a permitted use, which I would, maybe I shouldn't assume, but I would think it would be, and I think Council Thiessen's letter is timely. I think the quicker we can have our endorsement from council's endorsement to help with their fundraising efforts, the better. I understand your concern, but maybe administration can just check on that. But if it isn't going to have to get circulated to neighbors, I'm pretty confident Rising Above is going to be a good neighbor, and they've been a good neighbor to this point. So if it isn't circulation, I think it would be better for us to approve this today and just really help this organization start solidifying their fundraising efforts. So I'm in support of the motion.
Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue. Council Thiessen, would you like to close?
No, thank you. Council Plott just took my clothes away from me. Thank you very much.
All right. So I'll call the question on the motion to direct the mayor to write a letter of support for the Rising Above facility to be built on the same land as the current facility. Call the question, please vote. Okay, it was carried eight to one. Moving on, there are no notices in motion. We're not having a recess tonight, so I am, no public hearings, and I'm going to move on to council member reports, starting with Council Thiessen.
Hey, all right, cool. Well, first of all, thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good day. So I'll just start off with my external committees first, and then I'll just highlight some of the events I took part in. On June 22nd, we had our Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance AGM. It was a good, it was a good meeting, relatively brief. I had to be there in McLennan, even though most of it was online. As duty of the chair, I have to be able to control the conversation, so the request came from administration that I do it there. Happy to see Mayor Clayton in the audience as well. And all was good. We had a great presentation on the wetland mapping tool that was granted by the province, and a good presentation there, I believe by Shannon Murphy of Alberta Parks. And our full slate of directors was elected to serve for the next two years, and then our other half of our directors will come in into, I guess, the fold next year to be voted on as well, or appointed. The following day, I was in Spirit River for a Grand Spirit Foundation meeting down at the old Pleasant View Lodge. We also received a tour of the new Pleasant View Lodge, which is about, I'd say, 60% of the way through construction. So far, so good. It looks good. As we know, that'll add another 96 beds for our seniors in rural Alberta there, which is always a good thing. Also, speaking on Grand Spirit Foundation, I was away the week before for four days for the Alberta Seniors and Community Housing Association Strategic Planning Session, which had lots of excellent conversations. I'd love to talk to the rest of council or the community about some of the things we discussed, probably offline when we have more time, as I'm only on a five-minute time limit here. Also, the last couple of weeks has been chock-full of amazing and incredible events for our First Nations people, starting with National Indigenous Peoples' Day, where I had the honor to participate in the parade with PVT, Energy Solutions and Logistics, handing out candy to the kids, as well as prior to the actual parade judging on the floats with Jerry Napier. I think we were holding up the parade line, but that's just because we're talking of guys. I just want to throw a shout out to the Head Start Program, who, in our opinion, won the best float of the day. So congratulations to the kids, the regalia was awesome, and the fact that they walked and danced and handed out candy along the streets, too, was extra awesome. I also got to take part in the powwow this past weekend on both Saturday and Sunday. I got to take in both of the opening ceremonies and stayed for about four hours every day. Got to check out some of the stuff that happens at a powwow. I've seen a bit of smaller gatherings in the past here in Grand Prairie, but this was really an amazing sight. The pictures don't do it justice, because there's literally almost 1,000 people on the floor all the time, whether they're dancing, sitting, moving around, and then another minimum of 500 people in the seats constantly on the one side. So it looks like an empty rafters, but there was plenty of people in there and lots of shuffle-by space that you had to sort of squeeze yourself through the crowds. Also, on the 23rd, this past Friday, after Grand Spirit Foundation meeting in Spirit River, I drove out to Dimmesdale to emcee for the Empire Oilfield Solutions Third Annual Charity Golf Tournament. This is a fundraiser for the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation to purchase a mobile mammography unit that'll help to service 120-plus communities in the Alberta North Zone. That will ensure that people who would otherwise have to drive down to the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital could stay in their home community and get a free checkup and breast cancer screening right in their home community, which we know how important that is to be able to get that type of testing and service in your community. With all that being said, I am leaving some off the table, but I want to leave a little bit of room to say a big thank you to our CAO, Bob Nicolay, for coming in kind of midstream and early on in this council, this council tour, and really providing incredible leadership to our community, giving council good guidance, having a stable hand at the helm, and really giving us the legs to run with what we need to do. And as our mayor always says, we're the hardest-working council she's ever worked with, but a good deal of that is because we can do the things that we want to do, because we have trust and the faith in the organization that they're going to do the things that we need them to do. So thank you very much, Bob, for your time here, for your extra time here, and to your significant other, who I know at times you spent time away from Sandy. Glad to see that she's in the room here today as well to take in one more council meeting. And yeah, I can't wait to continue our friendship beyond this work relationship. Thank you so much for your service.
Council Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. When I count up the number of events and stakeholder meetings, et cetera, that I have attended in the last two weeks, there's 11 on the list, and I went to about, I'd say, half of the ones that I could have gone to. So indeed, this is a hard-working council. Some of the things I did attend, I attended an impact engagement discussion of domestic violence that was hosted by Odyssey House. I was lucky enough to go hear Alberta Rural Advantage at Better Than Fred's. That was a concert that moved from the Bonnet Centre to Better Than Fred's to increase the number of people who were attending. I have to say that the highlight of that night was actually North Blood, which is our local band, not the band that came from Calgary. So while rural Alberta Advantage is an interesting band, North Blood knocked it out of the park. I also attended Drop In Event Upstairs on the third floor at Marketing and Communication. Had a look at some of the things, or some discussion with our marketing and communication people about some of the things that they're really excited to be bringing to council in the future. Stakeholder meetings, I attended at GP Public School District, and today at Northwest Polytechnic. The regular committees that I sit on, I attended an Airport Commission meeting and also a Zoom meeting for Peace Health Advisory Council. I attended a mixer at the Bear Creek Golf Course for Invest GP, and an Aquatera Milestone Party. And the highlight certainly of my two weeks was attending the Grand Gathering the weekend before last at the Bonnet Centre, a sellout and always really great. There was a fiddler who played early on in the evening, and he was unbelievable. So such great indigenous talent. And then this weekend, I attended the Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow, both on Saturday and Sunday, where I walked in the entrance parade, I don't know what you call it, the entrance grand march, thank you, for Mayor Clayton for two of the grand marches. There were somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000 to 5,000 people in attendance. There were somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000 to 5,000 people in attendance over the course of the two days. And people were here from treaties six, seven, and eight. And so that's an excellent showing. And congratulations to our Indigenous specialist, Warren, whose last name I can't remember, Mickerak, as he and the Director of the Art Gallery, Daniel Becker, were the co-chairs on organizing that event, and they did a bang-up job. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Went to also the Impact Grand Prairie Event on Domestic Violence. Went to a powwow opening at the art gallery. Went to the city staff barbecue, and I always enjoy meeting the employees at the barbecue and love serving burgers. And of course, I'm a little feisty when it comes to serving burgers. Anyway, went to the Grand Prairie Pride Society Sponsor Night. We had, again, two Grade Six Isabel Campbell classes and mock council. And we also had them come in and do a tour of four different departments of the city. And they really enjoyed that learning about. And we were able to finish off with a bunch of questions in council with Counselor Bressi. Went to ISL Engineering Open House. Went to the Transportation Study between the city and the county. Went to the drop-in marketing event, Open House upstairs. And then joined City Council and the Grand Prairie Catholic and public school divisions one day after each other, finding out how we can work together and what their needs are. Went to an Aqua Terra shareholder meeting, Invest GP Mixer, and the National Indigenous Mini Round Dance. And went to the Traditional Powwow. And then went to Northwest Polytech and had a meeting with them this morning. And also want to pass on huge thanks to Bob for your leadership, your mentorship, and just you're an awesome guy, and we, we're going to miss you. So thank you very much.
Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think I'm only going to read about a third of my list here. I'll leave something for the other side of the room, but I'm going to develop a theme here. So the first event in the theme is the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. Opened up a brand-new exhibition in Galleries One, Two, and Three. And a lot of that was, was around beautiful regalia that we had seen at the powwows. So there's great information around each of the regalia and what the dance is all about around it. So it's a free event. I believe it's probably up for three months. So for those of you out there, I strongly suggest you take it in. Next was the Grand Gathering Gala by the Friendship Center. And this is the second annual, again, another first-class event. I haven't gotten the text back to see how much they raised, but great community support, wonderful event, just a great feel-good event. So congratulations to the team down at the Friendship Center. We were at a different function, but I did manage to take in a viewing of the Indigenous Day Parade and saw Counselor Thiessen in there. From there, went over to the mini round dance at the Friendship Center and again, sat with some of my colleagues. Oh, here we go. Congrats Committee on a successful gala. This year, we raised just over $160,000. So the text came in in time. So that, the venue was packed for the mini round dance. It was an amazing turnout. Mayor Clayton and I were saying, we need a bigger venue for this. And then at the powwow that I attended on the weekend, what was mentioned by some of the, the board members from the Friendship Center is, we need a bigger venue. So consensus is there and something to work for for next year. So they did a terrific job on that. And then the powwow was amazing. Lot of great vendors were in place. We used both sides of the Bonnet's Energy Centre for a variety of different events and games. So for Indigenous Peoples' History Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day, all around it, a great week and a half celebration. So thanks to all that participated and to everybody that volunteered and organized. So thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll start with going to the exhibition at the Art Gallery as well. That was, that was pretty cool to see firsthand, and I implore people to go and check it out. Attended the staff barbecue, and I'm happy to say I knew many more people than I did last year, so yay. Rotary changeover for Friday Club. Congratulations to Jill Park, who was Rotarian of the Year. And that was given for all his work done with the new Ukrainians coming to our community, around 300 now. And that congratulation goes out to everyone who helped in, in that aspect. Of course, the Grand Prairie Catholic and Public School stakeholder meetings, that's always good to see them. The Sport Connection AGM, another year for them. And I attended the Grand Prairie Regional Rec Committee. And again, we're working as a whole region and collaborating in the needs for, what we need for recreation in our area for our young people. Older people too, we have pickable now, that's good. And of course, there is senior soccer now that I'd love to see come here. Walking soccer, walker soccer? Yeah, so we, we won't forget about our seniors. And then last but not least, of course, the powwow. That was awesome. That was my first powwow. And the drumming, that is my absolute favorite part. It could even be louder, as far as I'm concerned. And, and the dancing, of course, in all, in all their regalia was beautiful. And that's it for my report.
Thanks, Counselor Bosch. Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I've got community features update from our last meeting. On the business side, partnering with the Grand Prairie Library to offer outreach services at the Pilot Entrepreneur Desk at the library, and that will be starting in September. Looking at other ways CF can pop up around the region, especially the towns in, in the nearby. And numbers of workshops, Wednesdays, and, uh, numbers for the workshop Wednesdays continue to strengthen. Under professional development, CF Provincial Symposium will be held in St. Paul from September 19th to 22nd. And the staff are meeting July 6th at Nighthawk for a team-building and planning session to help map out our marketing plan and our plan awareness strategy. Projects, we've got Smart Start Cohort and continues to participate, take part in sessions such as insurance and accounting. Shell Livewire proposed dates for Cohort V to, to Shell to see if we can get them to commit to sponsoring again. And sponsors are approaching us to commit to their sponsorship already. GP RIN, Prairie Can's application for funding for the Centre for Entrepreneurial Excellence has progressed to a full proposal stage. Anticipate delivering CF and GP RIN services on AMPUS starting September 2023. Subcommittees have been working on T-RMs of reference so that the work can be done extended further by more CF staff. And stakeholder meetings, August 9th, GP RIN supported clients to attend and ventures in Calgary, May 31st to June 2nd. Tracy Pearson with My Breast Day and Mike Legley with Go Pin It attended the three-day event, as did a couple of our staff locally. And I'll leave it at that for community futures. But once again, I was a busy guy, and I would have been busier, but we had the Police Commission stuff to do, and we spent many a days and nights trying to get things straightened out and on track and without holding anything back. But I did attend the Filipino flag raising and not, or with Independence Day. I did attend the impact engagement. And I was the chief cook and bottle washer at the barbecue for the stomped Evergreen Park for the Rotary. And South Peace or Strategic, I gotta eat or something. Strategic Priorities Working Group, spent a half a day there. And GP Staff Appreciation. I didn't spend as much time as I wanted because we were doing Police Commission stuff. Also, Adventure Aviation had a fundraiser at the airport last Friday, and it was a good event, and I think they made a fair bit of money. And once again, I attended the annual Grand Gala. Going back to community futures, myself and I know Mayor Clayton, we were judging Lemonade Day and its little tiny entrepreneurs looking at trying to make lemonade and profit at the end of the day. I don't think some angel investors got their money back, but I think others did. We'll leave it at that. And I spent, I actually had a day that I didn't have anything planned other than spending Father's Day out at the car, car show and shine out at the People's Church. And I also attended the GP Mixer, Invest GP Mixer. And as today, we had a good conversation with Northwest Polytech and the City Council, and I appreciated the conversations that we had. And with that, that is my report for this week. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll start by saying a big thank you to CAO Nicolay for all the effort you've put in. This organization has changed dramatically over the last six-ish years, and we've built such a strong culture of 700-plus people who are really serving this community, and you were a big part of that. So thank you for that, and also really grateful that you're handing over to some very, very, very capable hands. And so, thank you. A few things that I had going on, like Counselor O'Toole said, commission was something else this last month. The commission's done a lot of work and excited to give more updates on that in the future. But the, one thing I do want to highlight is I'm incredibly proud of the commission that our community's put forward. The public members and my council colleague on that are so incredibly diverse in their different experiences, their different career backgrounds, but they're all very passionate about this community. And they're all also very busy people. So it's remarkable how much time they're willing to give to standing this police service up. So thank you to my fellow commissioners. A few things I got to do that others weren't at is Youth Advisory Council. To celebrate the end of the school year, we took them to an escape room. And I'm happy to report, those are some smart kids. For the first time in my life, we actually defeated an escape room. But I'll say, those kids were very lucky to have me.
Just ask you.
Only because, only because, though, I helped make sure the credit card came out at the end to give us the time extension. A few other things is I got to attend Northern Alberta Elected Leaders. I mostly had my Alberta Muni's hat on, but I also got to wear my city hat. It was fun talking to, for those that don't know, that's mayors and reeves and MLAs from our corner of the province go to it. It's 40% of the province's landmass is represented there, but only 5% of the province's population. And also, huge amount of the province's GDP. So interesting challenges we have in this corner. It's fun talking about common ones. The one I'll highlight is there was actually pretty significant conversation around our resolution on medical first response. And everybody agreed that there's been inappropriate download on municipalities of responding to medical emergencies, but divided room on if we want provincial money for it or not. The reason being, some are worried that if we start getting provincial money, that, then it will become expected that we continue to deliver the service and that funding will be cut off in the future. And so it was interesting discussion. Got to go to Municipal Leaders Caucus, Wembley hosted one. Those are, those are summer gatherings Alberta Muni's does, and it was great for Wembley to host. And it was great to get to go for dinner with their council and watch them show off their community to my fellow board members. So really appreciated that. The Grand Gathering is always great. It's probably the best meal I get of the entire year. That buffalo steak was incredible, and it was just a fun night all around. And although my wife didn't find success in the raffle, I was sure happy I did. Last up is the powwow was, the, the powwow was incredible. And my highlight, though, was the hand games. And I went and watched, and I do not know what's going on in them, but they are fun to watch. So Mayor Clayton, this is a serious suggestion I'm about to make. I'm not, I'm not joking here. I think part of reconciliation is us experiencing Indigenous culture. And I think what would be fun is we should bring somebody in to teach us how hand games work, and we should have a council versus CLT hand games night. I think it'd be a fun team-building thing.
Yeah.
So that's a serious suggesting. So I think it'd be a cool part of reconciliation, but also I just really want to understand hand games next time I watch them, because they look fascinating. So thank you to everybody that made that powwow and those hand games happen.
For sure. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think you got our CEO to maybe stick around a little longer with that comment. But for business, busy a couple of weeks like everybody else, just Airport Commission with, with Counselor Blackmore. We had just for June numbers, was kind of sad to see it was the first month it was flat for growth. Could be attributed to fires and WestJet strikes, but it was kind of sad to see it was the first month we haven't seen some growth, which does impact the surplus for this year, but still in the block for the year. But it was sad to see our surplus trending the wrong direction. For the Library Board, we had a lot of conversation about where the home of the French Literacy Collection should go or could go. Had some priority updates on some policy and quite a lengthy conversation about whether we should be buying a laser engraver or not and what the impacts could be on the community and the business community with that. Attended the shareholder meeting with Aqua Terra and the dinner. Want to thank the staff for a great Invest GP. I think it was a good launch for Invest GP. And there was actually quite a few faces for me that I haven't seen there in the past. And so that was nice to be meeting new people in our community. Attended the Filipino flag raising, and it felt like a couple of weeks of a theme around education with us meeting with the school district, the Catholic school district, and then NWP today. But it was nice to hear them being very engaged with our advocacy priorities. And I think for, for all of us probably in that room, hearing some of their priorities so we can talk to ministers when we have their ear. And lastly, I think the highlight of it was actually the, the city barbecue for me. I loved seeing the staff show up in their different departments and just their camaraderie within the groups. You know, we, we talked lots at a big-picture level about what's the culture like. And for me, it was a nice day to just see, I think the culture is pretty darn good and what, from what I saw with the groups walking in. It just seemed like a lot of camaraderie with each group that walked through the, through the, I guess, parking lot to get to us, and really well-attended. I don't know how many burgers and smokies went out, but it sure seemed like a lot of food. It was just great to see it well-attended. So that was probably one of my highlights, and I want to thank it men for inviting council and letting us be involved with that. And I think it's a huge, huge honor for us to be able to be part of that event. And lastly, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Nicolay for, for, for coming back to the organization and taking around too. I think from what I've seen from my year of pause and coming back, I think it really changed where the organization was heading. And you should be really proud of how you changed your organization. I know it's big-picture stuff and not fun stuff, some of the changes you made. But I, I can say your, your calm wisdom was, was really needed for me at times and some of the phone calls we had where you talked me off a ledge or a shelf, so to speak. So it was good to have those and just, we're going to miss your knowledge of not only governance, but I think the knowledge you brought from industry. It's very common I've seen so far in government for people to be very knowledgeable with government, but to have a, you're kind of a unicorn in that you brought a lot of knowledge with industry. And it didn't seem to matter what industry we talked about, you brought it. So we're going to miss you a lot, Bob. I know personally, I'm going to miss you a lot. You've been a bit of a governance mentor, I guess, for me that way, and just, and how your comedy meter has been very well-received. So thanks for your time in the, in the city, and I look forward to you and Senator's next chapter in life and hearing all about it. So I'm sure you've got some exciting times ahead.
Thanks, Counselor Plot. No surprise, but Counselor Bosch has a few more words.
I think you asked for this, because you told me to, like, keep talking.
I know, that's what I thought.
This is for CAO Bob Nicolay. You were at the top of my list here, and I read down and then lost sight of the top. But it speaks to who you are at the top. I just want to thank you for everything you've done for this community and for the city of Grand Prairie and all the staff. You know, a few years ago, a lovely lady by the name of Helen Rice told me, you need to meet Bob. And, and she spoke accolades about, about you. And I didn't get the opportunity. We came and went at basically the same time. But as luck would have it, I, I did get to meet you. So I'm grateful to have worked with you and see what you do with everybody in this community and this council, CLT and staff. So thank you.
Just a couple of items that I attended that council didn't attend. I had the opportunity to attend the International Act Dev Council Forum in Calgary. It was a great conference and an opportunity to hear from economic development professionals and branding specialists, marketing specials, specialists from around North America. So I really enjoyed that conference. So I really enjoyed that conference. I also attended with CEO Nicolay and our team from Invest GP, the Global Energy Show. It was great to see the people coming by the booth that was shared with the MDA Greenview and the County of Grand Prairie. It was really a well-attended show and a great conference. Before I forget, I want to recognise that it's our former colleague, Councillor John Lerner's birthday today, always thinking of him. I had the opportunity to have, sit on a call with the Community Rail Advocacy Alliance that I served time with, with Senator Simons and Senator Sorensen. It was great for them to hear the advocacy initiatives that that group is working on. Judge Lemonade stands with Councillor O'Toole. Really enjoyed my time at the Grand Gathering and so thankful for Councillor Bressi's participation in the raffle. I enjoyed my educational conversations with Grand Prairie Public and Grand Prairie Catholic as well as Northwest Polytechnic. I think it, those stakeholder conversations are vital to our success as we continue to share our story. Attended a celebration for Justice of Court of King's Bench, Chris Millsap, something that council should be very proud of, that we've accomplished one of our advocacy priorities, and I know he will do exceptional work. Attended the Aqua Terra shareholder meeting, as well as the 20th anniversary of Aqua Terra. Having served on the Aqua Terra Board many years ago, it was really a great full circle to see them come to their 20th anniversary. And I was appreciative of, of CEO Vaughn's comments in regards to the council or the city's significant role in that organisation. And really something that the Grand Prairie residents should be proud of, Aqua Terra is something that is, is looked at across the province and across the country as a huge success. And it's something that Grand Prairie should be really proud to think that they initiated that original conversation. Attended the Invest GP Mixer. Thank you to the Invest GP team who put together a great event. Also attended a composite football fundraiser, and my youngest son is playing football, so that's exciting. And they raised $24,000 at their event, so that was exceeding their expectations, so that was a great event. Yes, there was a $600, $800 carrot cake that night, yeah. And it wasn't bought by me. I don't like carrot cake that much. Anyways, attended the National Indigenous Peoples' Day Parade and Round Dance. Thank you to the Friendship Centre and those involved for putting on that great event. The Mighty Peace Watershed AGM, as Councillor Bressi mentioned, and was able to call in for part of the AB Munis Summer Leader Caucus. Attended that virtually. Had breakfast recently with MLA Ron Weeb. It was great to get up to speed and, and talk about future conversations that council will have with both of our MLAs. Attended the Pow Wow, and you're right, what an event. Just really, they hit it out of the park for the first year, moving in inside, and I just look for many years ahead on the growth of that. I think that there's excellent work being done there, and I really appreciate those, Wendy and Warren and people that put their time in to make such a great event. I want to thank Bob. You know, a change in leadership is significant to any organisation, but in the municipal world, it can be even more so, considering when Bob came to us, we'd recently just undergone an election. So the organisation was impacted by a new council. And then short months following a new CAO, we were given the privilege to contract and experience CAO that knew us and whom we had complete confidence in. I'm really grateful for the time that you gave us, the diverse knowledge you provided and the experience and wisdom you offered. Your vision and patience, but mostly all your kindness does not go unnoticed. So in closing, Bob, I can't express enough words, but thank you. I'll give it to you, Bob, for a couple of closing words if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Members of Council. You know, I, I, this is a lot to reflect on. I counted one day, I think I've worked with 12 city councils, and I've heard this council describe itself as the hardest-working council. You are the hardest-working council I have ever encountered, and I have worked with some wonderful councillors. Your commitment and passion to the community is the same. Everywhere I've gone, I've seen councils with a commitment and passion to a community that's remarkable. Local government is a breeding ground for that, and also the area that attracts the people that genuinely have that sentiment. But your hard work is absolutely remarkable. It's been incredible to try to keep up with you. I also want to acknowledge the executive team. The senior management team in this organisation is also remarkable, an incredible group of people that have come together in public service. I offered up a very verbose CAO's farewell message to the organisation the other day, and so I'll be brief this evening. I quoted Virgil and Lisa Loeb and others in trying to get a sentiment across about the organisation and what it means to be in public service. But it is truly, as Virgil called it, the noblest good. And the executive team in this organisation lives and breathes it every day. But it's not just the executive team, it's all the way through to every employee that I encountered in this organisation that has a commitment to this community that is absolutely outstanding. Also want to just offer a brief comment about the character of this community. This community is different. It is a community that takes a little while to get to know, and I personally want to thank the local Rotarians for inviting me in when I first came here and helping me to understand this community and what makes it up. But the character in this community is not the same as other communities that I've lived in. I've lived in three countries and more cities than I can count, but it is really a unique community, and we ought to be very, very proud of it. They'll always be a part of my heart in Grand Prairie. It's been an honour and a privilege to serve you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Bob. I know we will work together for some time because I know your passion for this community is unlimited. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Sandra for allowing us time with Bob. I think that is it, so I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.